We need to order at seven oh six. Uh, some announcements, the Sage Center January, February newsletter is posted online. You should have received it in the mail as well. A couple of volunteers specifically, we're looking for someone on the cable advisory committee. It was one or two people on that committee right now. And finally, I just wanted to give a shout out to the DPW, uh, chief wire and fire police for their hard work yesterday and the day before. And today, yeah.
Here, here.
Yeah. Okay, regular business, uh, public comment, anybody here like to make a public comment? Okay, uh, consent agenda. Uh, I had a couple edits to these, so I guess we'll take this off the consent agenda.
Okay.
Did you have any?
I don't think so, okay.
Jim, on item C, I would just change that last second to last sentence instead of saying it was a big deal. Something less subjective. And then on item D B, on the public trail use process. I just want to clarify that my comment, uh, third sentence from the end. Read suggested that the next step was examining the process with respect to permitting. That was meant to just say that we have to see how it's going to coordinate with separate permitting processes. Not that that was going to be part, I mean, it does, uh, say that Angus clarified that, but. You, are you there on what, um, okay, all right, great. So with those two changes or any others?
Yeah, there are a couple, no, in fact, um. We're really sure we'll just, uh, rebuild the thing on, uh, C, um. Large case C, lowercase C, third line down, the word two should be, uh. At the first page, the word two should be, uh, well, the individual evaluations of different job grades, but that's. So under D, the, um, uh, B, public trail use review process. Is that? Is that a word right? I thought it was just public trail. Creation or design, not use, right? That's right. And then that's the same phrase, public trail use document is, um, a couple lines down. I didn't see that it would be phrased differently on, um, E. As I queried, the, um, tree committee chair, if it was possible, indication committees outside trees would be good residents. Plant to mitigate slash survival and the change and, and. I think the way I phrased it, and I didn't go back and listen to the thing, it was essentially. I was suggesting. And those, you know, residential planting of trees isn't going to mitigate climate change, but my concern was that, um, people be directed to trees that, um. Won't try, essentially trying to assist nature moving trees farther north more rapidly. You know, trees that are currently at the northern end of their, um, of their climate range. And, and, um, appear, occur here infrequently currently, but in the future will be, um, better. So I, where I, I put a note here, it says thrive as warmer temperatures move northward with climate change. And then also an E. A third line from the bottom of E. Um, A, uh, where the word accumulated. And I think what I asked is what had been budgeted as opposed to accumulated.
And I just have a question for you, Chris, on FD, did you say that the MTA communities requirements were extortionary? That seems like a complaint, but I think it probably likely.
No, I didn't see.
Uh, did you say extortionary nature in the whole thing?
Yeah.
I don't believe it.
Okay.
You might have said that.
Like, doesn't bother us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In fact, he wants it in there.
Okay.
No, I just.
A literal dictionary reading of the word.
Yeah, I'm sure Max got that from the report, so, all right. Then emotion to approve it and then.
Yeah, motion to approve your minutes amended.
Okay, all in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
All right, Angus, you're on.
Okay, uh, you want to take, uh, things in order?
Michelle, you want to?
Uh, yeah, let, let, I wouldn't want to keep Paul here all night, but like some of these updates are of general interest, though, if you have some time.
I do.
Great, okay. Uh, first item, the, uh, superseding order conditions that was issued by the Mass DEP. Uh, it's just a brief update, not willing to get into it in detail tonight. What I do recommend, uh, is outlined in the memo, is that we invite the health agent and the, uh, appellant into the, uh, regularly, next regularly scheduled meeting on the twenty ninth. Paul is available to attend, he's happy to be here. And, uh, I think now that we have an approved project with conditions, uh, this board is the project sponsor should reaffirm. The intent to go forward with that and just provide a, a public hearing in case, uh, you know, just before we sign a contract.
This is for the B, the deceiving.
Correct, that's right.
But not, so nothing has changed, the D P didn't add any additional conditions, they basically upheld, okay, just to make sure.
Why do we have to reaffirm, is my question?
You don't need to, it was Paul's suggestion, he, he had stopped down last week and talked to Rebecca and, um. You know, I, I, I just think with the board as the sponsor.
This is clear, I think.
Well, you know, it wasn't litigated, uh, it's now been resolved, so.
Was that actually litigation or just?
Well, that appeal, yeah, 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 you're right.
I looked at it as procedural and I just clarified that it's the right thing being done, so we can readdress it, I just don't see it.
Well, we also had, on a separate thing, you, you recall in December, on the, uh, inter municipal agreement with Amesburg, it's the host of the regional, um, public health. We had some follow up questions on that, and it would be great to have Paul taking me in to, to talk to the board directly on that, so that would kind of. He'd probably be here anyway, the twenty ninth was awesome.
My question, does this reopen a can of worms again or anything, or is it?
Not legally, um, but, but if the board, you know, if the board would say just go forward with the approved project, that's, that's fine, too.
The contract suggested if we agreed with them. And that, uh, when a butter was not happy, they appealed to the state and the state said it'd be good to go, so I don't. Know what we need to, nothing's changed.
What do you think, Rick?
Um, does. Do you think Paul feels that he needs sort of, uh, um, I don't know. I don't know, I'm not quite sure the way, very way to phrase it, but he needs backup, you know, like, it, it could be demonstrated.
I'm not sure, I know he, he values obviously that relationship with the residents, like he does everybody, but you know, there's. More than a decade of correspondence and.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so I think just from a, you know, from a process standpoint, uh, but just to be, to be fully, uh, clear, all I have is a, a post-it note that Rebecca left for me. I didn't talk to Paul directly.
Yeah.
She left me a post-it note saying, you know, Paul offered to come in on the twenty ninth, is happy to talk more about that. My sense for Paul is that he had kind of recommended that the board affirm that we're going forward with the project.
So do you want to double check with him on that, and if he does think it's worthwhile?
Yeah.
Then you should do it, and if it doesn't, then you.
Sure, that's, yeah, that's good, yeah, I, I, because, that's fine, I, I, I want to get some help, that's fine, but otherwise, I don't know why you, we need to reconfirm it, there's no hesitation, there's no change.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that, this is, um, if, you know, Paul feels that we need support, you're right, if he doesn't feel that we need to be supportive, um, then, then, you know, I think it's on we.
Okay.
But otherwise, it's another thing on the agenda that keeps something else, you know, on the agenda.
Yeah, that's true, true. Right, right. Uh, next item, church and prospect, uh, you know, really positive news on the bids, uh, coming in well below, uh, what we had committed then. Uh, we are still, uh, there's still some work to be done on figuring out exactly what would need to be borrowed. A couple of the, there are really three variables there, one is, um, I have been assuming that the board's prior authorization of the ARPA funds wouldn't be changed, but that's something that. That's just an assumption I'm making, uh, the second is that the, uh. Uh, the contingency that's, uh, carried in the project numbers, normally you wouldn't borrow for contingency because you don't want to be paying interest on something if you don't end up needing it. Uh, that's often why on a major project like that, you do bond anticipation notes for the first couple of years until it's actually closed out, and you know what the true project cost is. And this is where we've been talking all along, that the borrowing for church and prospect is gonna be aggregated with the existing outstanding bands for the, uh, the other two projects, the water tank and the chemical treatment building. Uh, we've, we've already been a few years into the bands, so we've been assuming we would go long term debt, but that would lead to a question, do we borrow for the contingency or do we somehow use like?
Yeah, for the contingency.
Except that's got, and maybe, maybe, that's got to be fully expended by the end of calendar twenty six, which I think is fine, so that would be a fine thing, but that's one of the financing kind of finer points that we got to figure out. The third one, which is, uh, really good news, is that the, well, good news. So the one point one million that was for the water tank and chemical treatment building, that had also been based on the costs that were activated at that time. Uh, this was three or four years ago, since that time, both of those projects have been completely successfully closed out. We didn't actually use the full one point one million, we used about, uh, nine hundred and ten thousand, but there's about a hundred and eighty six thousand that was not ended up needing for that. So if you go back a couple of meetings, uh, we put together estimates of the debt service, if we had the two point seven plus one point one. Once you back out that hundred and eighty six thousand from the bands and back out, you know, another, based on the lower amounts. So, so that, you know, that's all, you know, just the, the actual borrowed amount is going to be significantly lower than, um. The three point eight million that those debt service scenarios were based on, it might be more like two point six million. So we have a, we have a meeting next week with Hilltop, and we're really, we're working with Water to really fine tune exactly how to be financed. But that's going to be converted into, um, a thin debt service, which will then be really important for the Water Commission. So that when they set rates this spring, they can account for the, uh, debt service. So I just wanted to provide that, I think, and we did get the so-called green light letter from Bond Council. There's a lot of background that goes into getting that, that's a really important threshold issue, because at that point, you can actually, you're legally authorized to go borrow the money. In practice, we wouldn't be borrowing the money until at the earliest, um. Mid-May, uh, because we can't prepay the bands more than ninety days ahead of those mature in mid-July. So I make sure mid-April could be the earlier people. In practical terms, we probably would borrow the money closer to the, uh, band maturity date of mid-July.
So can you clarify on the contingency, I see five percent, ten percent, twenty percent, which, which one is it?
So on their initial estimates, they've been carrying a higher percentage, uh, and in their updated estimates, they carry five percent, but then. Uh, in one of the tables they send, they use the words ten percent, but if you do the math, it's actually five percent, so that was just an error they made in their email vote.
So the January fifth email from Steven says ten percent in the text, but the table says twenty percent.
Yeah, that's an error, uh, wait, so the January fifth from Steve, uh, right, updated cost, yeah, he's, uh. Yeah, that's, that's a label error, because if you do the math, the ninety one thousand he's showing is five percent.
Oh, it's five.
He just didn't change the, uh.
Okay.
Uh, label correctly.
All right. Would, yeah, further down, that's an older one, but that's why I just wanted to really do more ones, okay. Do you have any questions for him?
Yeah. Um. There can, uh, the contingent, the construction administration and the project representative, that number didn't change much, even though the value of the project, they keep it a hard number there, it's not a percentage, which.
Uh, that would be a good question to ask at the Water Commission meeting on Wednesday.
And then these are questions probably for them.
Yeah.
Because ultimately their project. And Tate and Howard, I presume, is the firm will be doing that work, even though we didn't get full product on another project. That would concern me. Is there another firm that could do the administrative component of this project? And again, that's a water department issue, but. On the previous project, they didn't follow through, so I don't know why you would continue down a path, giving somebody a contract for two hundred thousand dollars plus when you're not satisfied with previous work.
So what, what is the status of the contract, Angus, have they been signed already?
No. No, the, what is before the Water Commission this Wednesday morning is the contract and contract. Uh, I, I'm not aware of any contract for the inspection, the, the construction administration or the. Resid project representation, I'm, if there's been a draft contract sent from Tate and Howard to the department, I haven't seen it.
And they had, obviously, a contract to put it up to bid and design and it got to this point.
Yes, right, so.
Theoretically, you could terminate that, and there's a presumption, but it doesn't happen to be that they become the administrator of the construction.
Mm-hmm.
Just something to consider, um.
So you're saying the administration cost should be reduced because the value of the work?
Well, generally, that's how it works, they didn't reduce it much at all, um, when you look at their previous.
It's like two hundred dollars at that point.
Yeah.
Or not, uh, sorry, yeah, fifteen hundred dollars, from two hundred and ten thousand to two hundred and eight thousand.
And that's something you talk to another firm on, I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
And then two other questions, one just to curiosity, all the, uh, every contract, uh, had the police officer detail on a hundred and twenty five thousand without a, a bid requirement? That, plug number?
It must be if they all have the same.
And then your question again would be for the water, does that get adjusted over time if they don't use a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars at least detail, that's usually a big number.
Yeah.
The last question would be, is there any interest in adjusting the amount that this board has supported for the ARPA funding on this versus. Uh, at the time, it was necessary to have it, might get this, you know, certain goal value, but where the budget came in significantly lower.
I, I think that's a real good question, and, and, um. As we ask that question, we should be thinking about where else. Would we, and certainly there are other places that funds could be applied, but where else, how else would we apply those funds? And so they need to be used by the end of, uh, end of this calendar year.
Have to be under contract by the end of the calendar year, yeah.
Right, that's never a problem, you can buy a piece of equipment at that point, if you get, you know, within a few months of it, you buy something that's in your capital plan already. Use the ARPA money and then have that money to push it on, yeah, I don't think that should be the point.
Yeah. No, I agree with that, just, you know, just a consideration.
So how about a B new plan with that?
I don't know, I think you have to bring the water department into that conversation as well. I just think the discussion should be had, because that, that was a number that it was, you're trying to help save the, the budget on it, because it was going to be so extraordinary.
And it was based on the cost of materials, I mean, that's where the number came from originally, so now there's no basis for it, or, you know.
I don't remember the break, I didn't look at the breakdowns, yeah, the trace on the material at all.
Well, actually, I, I, I compared the material costs.
Yeah.
As down here to what was in the, that, uh, proposal, that quote that they'd gotten, and these, you know, if you notice, there's nothing here for labor, for installation. So it appears to me that the labor and, and installation materials, aside from pipe, you know, uh, sand, whatever else has to be brought in, are, are integrated into the per foot.
Everything is profitable at the end of the unit, right, right, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so, so that's all filled into the unit price, because the, the unit price, you know, say, I think it was a ten inch, no, it's the eight inch ductile iron that is the highest. Um, value component there, you know, by, by a huge margin, you know, by, you know, ninety, more than ninety percent. Um, and, and, um, that one oh four sixty nine, if I remember right. In that quote, they had the cost for the eight inch ductile iron for the pipe alone, not installed, it's something like thirty five or forty dollars a foot, um, actually, I may have it open still.
Yeah, you really can't compare the two, I don't believe, because it's a fully burdened number.
Right, e- exactly, but I just, it's, this, it was.
We can use the ratio of the two, the ratio of ARPA to the overall project versus the overall number, and see what the ratio comes down to here.
Yeah, actually, it's forty eight dollars, it's what that quote was, was forty, and so, yeah, like you said, it includes overhead profit, you know, other installation materials.
So that's an interesting idea. And just use it as a, a ratio, just of the construction cost, not of the, um, engineering oversight.
Yeah.
You, are you going to the water meeting?
I, yeah, I've got time to.
I'll be there, but unfortunately due to other meetings, I've only got exactly one hour.
Yeah, okay.
I won't be able to stay to the full meeting.
Yeah, you want?
Yeah.
One, I do.
Yeah.
And do you know why going places on every agenda?
I do not, I called Mark on Friday, uh, asking that exact question, and he didn't know. Uh, he said that, uh, you know, Bob contacts Jody to set the agenda, Mark doesn't, I guess, see the agendas before they're hosted, and he didn't buy it. Uh, I don't know, did it come up after I left the last meeting?
No, it was, you know, I didn't even think about that in the meeting, but I don't think there was any discussion at all, I don't recall any discussion at all, the whole place.
Mark didn't know I would have been included.
Okay.
Yeah, cut my act, too.
Are you making this?
Yeah, just so I remember the question.
We move on, you hear?
Yeah.
Uh, the other, the next item is just FYI, but if I had to remove all, I want to definitely thank our concrete agent for all the work she's done to help. With this filing and to get permission from Natural Heritage Back to the Fall to do a single filing for the entire. I have a tree removal program rather than individual filings, you're at a different location, she had gone and kind of got that approach taken, so while it is, uh. More permitting than we're used to doing for this work, uh, it's, it's streamlined as can be.
This was on in conservation commission, I don't know why I was on, the, the starting of the time as a tree removal.
Okay.
Yeah, it's great that she's wrapped it up.
Yeah, yeah. So that's just informational. Item D, uh, what you have in front of you is just a template provided from, uh, the land grant administrators, this is for the Thomo Brookland. So this is, I know we've mentioned this before, but now that we have a template, which I just got in the last, uh, in the weeks, I wanted to share it, just so we all have a sense of the scope. Of what needs to be put together by the end of June, there's a lot of parties that are going to need to be involved with that, as we look ahead to the next, uh, you know, five and a half months. Uh, we just need to make sure we have the bandwidth to actually put this together and get, get it to the state by June thirtieth with all, all the buying that we're going to need.
So is Michelle taking the lead on?
Yeah, yeah, but she'll, yeah, she'll, our, our engagement is not close.
And any estimate on the number of hours that we'll run into this, it seems like quite a bit.
I think it's what we make of it, uh, but knowing how, you know, hands on a lot of the committees are, I think that is gonna, I think it's gonna be a significant investment of staff time to get this done. And as you know, there's some interest, uh, from the Milpon Committee in particular, seeing the existing man, the existing pipe state Milpon management plan, so they expanded. This should not in any way practical, we just need to kind of drive the state through that, because that's just not, even before we had this template, we knew that that, there were practical problems with that. But it's, 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 we have to, you know, follow the state's template, yeah. Uh, letter E, we did get the draft, uh, conditions assessment, uh, Sam and Christine, you all must are reviewing it, I'm only about ten pages into my review. Uh, we will circulate that later this week, but I did want to at least give, uh, Sam and Christine a few, you know, a, a work week to, to at least make sure there's nothing glaring, because. That's, it's really out of respect for people's time, uh, I would tell you, glance, it looks very professional, very thorough. Uh, I did get a note from Sam Lee today suggesting he, uh, one aspect was a little thin, so we want to, uh, you know, do some of that. That, but the idea would be we've then circulated that to the, the working group and anyone else who requests it, uh, but we'd like to, uh, have multiple rounds of reviews. Before we bring it forward at a public meeting for the board to formally consider.
Have you looked at it and just, or?
I only read the first ten pages, which is a large, like the acknowledgements, adding people that weren't, you know, that type of, so no, I'm not into the depth of it at all, I have it headed in.
So what, what is it going to actually be related to, or?
I mean, it's a public document, so I could forward it, I just, I, because it's such a consequential document, and some number of people in the community are gonna spend a lot of time with it. If we know there's going to be three drafts before it even gets to this board, I feel like, why send it out broadly now when there's going to be all these drafts?
Yeah, no, I agree, I, I just ask about access for the working group.
Good, uh, right, this week.
Okay.
This week, yeah, 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 I just wanted, you know, at least Sam and Christine to at least have read it, the lengthy that it's, you know, that hasn't.
Yeah, I don't know, like a hundred.
Hundred and thirty six pages, something like that, hundred and thirty two pages.
Lengthy.
Yeah.
Eight point.
They're doing it on their agenda packet.
Sorry?
They show on the agenda packet.
Yeah, yeah, no, it is, and I knew in putting it on the agenda, some people might say, I want to see the draft now, that's fine, we'll send it, it's just from a project management standpoint, I do think it's, it's good to have. Some time for staff to absorb it, you know, facing questions on it when they haven't even gotten to it yet, you know, I haven't even, I haven't got it yet.
They gave us a preview of it a couple of months.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Didn't know if that changed as they got deeper into it or not, because it was a less, um, disastrous situation than I anticipated.
Well, we, we did have a Zoom meeting with them in December to make sure that, you know, Sam was fully on record with, um. With some of his questions, I had a specific question, um, you know, he, he'd raised an issue about the, uh, stairway in the front of the building becoming a, a fire chimney. Yeah, because it's not got the adequate fire door, and, and there were concerns about that, and there weren't like items like that that seemed to me to be pretty consequential items. And so, yeah, I got a, I got a note from Sam this afternoon, it was, he added his comments, I saved it for a shared server, so we'd all be adding the same file. Mostly minimal, but I felt the conditions table was very weak and noted deficiencies, so that, that, I'm, yeah, a little concerned about that, so. But yeah, when we send it out kind of broadly and post the website and everything, I want to make sure we put our best foot forward, and, and it's, it's had some amount of vetting, uh. But, you know, it's all public documents, so if people want the blow by blow and you want, I, I will share it, I'm just, uh, especially with the broader distribution. Once people read something once, like, unless they're really following it closely, as far as their concerns, they've read it, so if, if we circulate something that doesn't, may or may not meet our expectations, I'd rather. You know, I'd rather get it to where.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that a hundred percent, I think, I think it should be pretty well vetted before it goes to, you know, as a draft, it's not, you know, a public document, right?
It's a public document, anything that's been transmitted is, is, is public.
Yeah, I, I just, there, you know, there may be places where we see things that we believe are a problem, you know, working.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and I, I feel that those shouldn't go out. You know, they shouldn't be made broadly publicly available until we've corrected them, because, as you said, when somebody's read it, they're going to assume that that's the case.
Right.
And, and if we, you know, have reason to believe that something's not correct, then I think before it comes out.
Yeah, you don't want to create that information.
Right.
For future misunderstandings. Uh, so, but yeah, we are, we are intending to get the working group this week, and with Sam having made his comments today, I mean, I, I, I'd like to, I'm probably not going to be able to read the whole thing before it goes out, but I at least want to. Finish the executive summary of some of the key sections, so. I I I'd like to, I'm probably not gonna be able to read the whole thing before it goes out, but I at least wanna finish the executive summary of some of the key sections, so. Uh, next one, this this came up in the fall, this seems like really a, just a housekeeping issue. Uh, so I did meet with Christian last week, I I told him I really don't think a meeting. With efficient game and that theory, I think all we need is for them to tell us what is the. Uh, the document they need to see to clear up any title issues, so I'm I'm assuming it's something like a confirmatory deed. That that at some point we'd look to this board to uh just clear the record that in fact this land is owned by the state, not by the town. Uh, and uh, if they can tell us that, and if. We agree in our review that it is in fact owned by the state, then let's make it as quick and just get it done responsibly.
It has, it has no value to the town. It's great that it actually goes back to, was it sixteen twenty or something, when the king of England? The king then England granted everything between forty and forty eight degrees north latitude.
It sounds like there was a bit of this flight of hand going on in some of these transactions.
Right, yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so I got, I got all of these documents in my inbox, I think. In a couple of days before town meeting, and it just was like, I didn't even remember it, and then I got an email in December saying, oh, the state's waiting for an answer. I was like, oh, shoot, I I didn't even.
Yeah.
It didn't even get on my list, that's how, how much it wasn't even, uh. It, because it seemed like kind of a, a housekeeping item, it's been hanging out for decades.
What's the concern on it, really, it's?
Yeah. I think it's just a housekeeping thing for them, too.
It's on somebody's list and I was gonna check off.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you also wonder if somehow. It can be, oh, like you said, you got the board right around.
Yeah, I wanna say it was like October eighteenth or so, but I got an email with like, you know, eight or ten attachments.
I guess I was just wondering, is it possible that the reason why this was looked at at all was because. Um, somebody was looking at properties around the um, the the Ash Street property that was just acquired and or. Somebody was looking at the Ash Swamp Road.
Yeah, 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 those were both.
You know, because they're, they're all within, you know, less than half a mile.
Yeah, 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 it's October eighteen, so.
I think we should just throw them the keys to the car and then I'm taking it.
That's my, yeah, like.
It's, I mean.
I don't want to spend a lot of.
It's, you know, it's under the control of the conservation commission, if it, if it is ours, and all they're gonna do is protect the land. So that, you know, its habitat, and that's what urban efficient wildlife is gonna do, so.
Yeah.
That's something.
Right, yeah, so, so I'm assuming that they will tell us, here's a confirmatory deed, we need it signed by the appropriate party. So if if that's how it plays out, I just shared this so that if and when that comes up in the future, you're not hearing about for the first time when you're being asked. Potentially to make a vote or sign a document. Uh, item G, uh, just a a quick update on this, uh, this is all draft, so I'm not looking for detailed review. And I did get uh detailed comments from Michelle this afternoon from the meeting she had uh midday today with uh Chief Wyer of Bush. Um, I was surprised that Bush made the meeting, I know he's been working like a lot thirty six hours, I was really clear with him. Late last night, at first thing this morning, I said, you know, you can postpone that meeting.
Yeah.
I'm letting it one, like, you don't need to be there, so when I got Michelle's email, I was like, why don't see there, he should be sleeping. But, so, so I haven't, I I did read her comments, but I haven't looked at it closely next to this, but. I think you can see the the direction that we're generally going.
So my only comment is they specifically asked for seasonal measures to reduce vehicle speeds. So, um, I guess. There are some things in there that do that.
Like the portable.
And that was just, I think she was inferring it would be seasonal. And does she actually walk the road before, every time?
That's what we did this summer, I mean, this is committing to that.
Yeah.
Going forward is a big commitment, but that is how we did it, but what I wrote up is what we did this summer.
Yeah, I guess another question I had about that in particular is, it's really a safety hazard for in that road.
Well, she has a police person accompanying her.
Oh, she does.
Insisted that she.
Okay, all right, yeah, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, commitment, all right.
Resources.
Yeah, no, no, it is, so I, and along those lines, I guess what I was envisioning, I didn't realize that she had a police officer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, escorting her essentially regarding the road, but I was just wondering if the DPW just closed the road, and that was when she did it. Because the DPW closed the road anyway to uh to do the work, so, I mean, would that save some money just to close the road so that. Michelle can can, you know, do the inspection and then.
That would, that was a good idea.
Don't close it that frequently, to be honest.
You, you, they're gonna do the work, they're gonna.
You know, aren't they going around?
No, when they do the grading.
Okay. Actually doesn't spell people going through. What I can do is, you know, as we get updated draft, I can email them to you, and you can get me your individual comments. I just want to make sure that when, when you're at on the twenty ninth to vote something, that we have something that you're all comfortable with.
Okay, yeah, that would be.
So, yeah, once I have an updated draft, I'll I'll email to the uh, to each of you.
So when you were asking about the seasonal. And that's, I was kind of wondering what that might be too, I mean, the, the, you know, the the portable, um, uh. Radar, um, you know, I'm kind of hoping that they use that.
Year round.
Year round, yeah, yeah, not, not just seasonally.
Yeah. Excuse me, so I don't know what they were anticipating, speed bumps or, you know, that kind of thing, but.
Well, that's worth better.
It is amazing, they just regraded it the other day.
Right, I had finally broke down and started going back to the street because it was so horrible.
See the people going through with this run, it's amazing, and the amount of metal parts that are falling, cars that are falling.
Are you serious?
Oh, yeah, and it's gotta be like, you know, the kids taking mom and dad's car, they're bombing through at forty five miles an hour.
Right.
There's all kinds of stuff, I'll start a collection for you, bro.
The metalworkers, running it down.
It's all rusted, it's a problem that they didn't pass inspection in the first place, you know, the good parts don't fall off.
Uh, I, next time, I just put in a couple of random things, I know a couple of meetings ago, I mentioned this slow char. Uh, Jim and Mac and Rebecca had updated this to, just based on current practice, so it's not anything before you to vote, but it's just that. So you know kind of how we're handling these appointments, so.
So, I had a question on this, do, we had talked about a recommendation from the, the board and the commission.
So we had, uh.
I saw that you contacted the chair, I was just wondering.
That's something that, when, when I wrote the first draft of this a couple of years ago, which is substantially similar, I put it that way because we've never. Formally looked for a body to recommend as members, and I think if we do, it's going to significantly slow down the process. Because a lot of these either only meet monthly or something like ZBA or Mill Pond Committee that might only meet three or four times a year. It would really slow down the process, and and prior board members, I don't know about this board, but prior board members have definitely raised their question about. Is reinforcing that the select board is the appointing authority, not, you know, the committees aren't self-collecting, so, well, you don't wanna. Not take account for, you know, how it's going, it was felt that like the chair, if the chair's given an opportunity to express any concern. You know, that's some dapperings, but without, without clouding, like, who is the appointment authority, this, this board is the appointment authority.
Yeah.
I'd actually, we can include that recommendation, saying that the chair recommends a chair.
Yeah, I just feel like in, you know, we've had a couple instances where we had more than one candidate, it would be helpful to, you know, put them before. But, I, I, that's fine, as long as the chair has passed.
And just by the way, I'll have to tell included this in tonight's packet, we've never circulated this, this is really just a kind of a, you know, work document.
Yeah, I think it's good.
So it's not.
Previously, it had like specific names, it was like, Annie will do this, or like, whatever, it was, it was very like.
Yeah. I wrote it one morning, kind of, because there had been a glitch the prior night, and I was very frustrated, and it was never written, and so I just wrote it. Because I was so tired of like, things slipping through the cracks, and then I handed it around, just so everyone was really clear on what they needed.
But, but now it's a future document that we can hand out to.
Yeah, yeah. And then the next, you know, I get these lists from uh Christine periodically, we we met on Friday, actually. We did make a couple of changes, I'm over there again today, so we did, we have since added a couple of things to this. We added both the anticipated CPC or CPA funding proposals for this cycle, so I do have an updated draft I got today. Didn't email it around, because you get a lot of paper anyway, but there is now a project seventeen, a project eighteen, which are the. Star Mill, Mill Pond's Deer Run Trail slash Boardwalk sixteen. Number seventeen is pickleball site selection feasibility, and we did actually, I met with actually Christine and Michelle this afternoon. We all felt, uh, Michelle suggested, and Christine and I felt this made sense, we should go ahead and add the Mill Pond all a- access trail. Even though right now that's kind of, you know, stagnant, there is a conceptual plan. There were resources expended at some point in the future, the town will pick, pick that up, so we felt we, it made sense to add. That as a project, even if it's not part of Christine's immediate work, but, and she did change at my request. The West Elm Green, West Elm's uh Greenway to uh basically tabled. Uh, because I, I told her, I just, as far as I'm concerned, that's not, you know, a priority project, you know, I know the con con feels it anyway.
Okay, good.
And then, yeah, we have to. So, any, anything else on other projects while we're, while I'm so good, okay. Item D, we got the Attorney General's approval of the spring town meeting building amendments.
When I sent around, we got the other approval as well.
For the ground mound and solar, that just came in this afternoon.
Okay.
I haven't read it, I'll, I'll read the letter.
It was, it was approval, it was, it was more warnings.
Yeah.
About how we can trip ourselves up.
Making sure it's still treated as a right or as an over amendment.
Yes, where's this forward, everything?
Wait, no, the solar bylaw amendments that were approved at the spring town meeting, the Attorney General has to approve, and it normally takes some, up to ninety days. But since we did a total bylaw recodification, that took them quite a while to review, as you would expect, and they kind of. Deferred their other reviews until that was done, so we're just today learning. That they approved something that was voted in what, maybe, late April, yeah, moving at the speed of government.
Well, it was, it was like one posting that the newspaper had sent us that was incorrect, and they. Kai-bashed, and they said your ninth day starts again, until we got that. I think they just wanted more time to reflect, frankly, but.
Uh, and then I did include a a correspondence with the uh town council reviewing the draft wetland bylaw. I actually just got another one today, uh, late today from the same attorney, I haven't opened the email yet. Uh, but I I really just included this just as a reminder that this is under active review, uh, yeah, I got a draft of three eighteen. Uh, I haven't read it yet, uh, but I can forward that around, this is a reminder that's under active development, reviewing, you know, drafting. A, a, a proposed bylaw, and that is uh gonna be proposed, uh, you know, for the board to include on the spring town meeting order. Just like that, we're through a hundred and thirty two pages of the packet.
Sixty pages, which were devoted to a piece of land that we really just want to get rid of.
Fascinating, it was, all right, we on to item E?
We are.
EA, review of zoning board of appeals questionnaire, was it worth waiting for?
Absolutely.
So. Uh, any questions to interview on this?
Yes. So I, I know you meet very infrequently, um, on demand, but very infrequently.
But very importantly.
Right, very important, exactly, oh, absolutely, um. Any idea if there's anything coming up in the near term, I'd sent, I don't know if you recall Paul, or if you, I sent you an email probably two months ago, two and a half months ago.
I apologize for.
Okay, and 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 I understand there's been, there hasn't been any action, so, there's been no party to go to, but I'm just curious if there's anything.
The right knowledge is nothing coming out.
Okay.
As I mentioned earlier, it's more than joking, I agree. Maple Street Cabal, so there's two areas, one on twelve Maple Street, about the guy who had the. Back to store the bar without any licenses, and further up the street, the guy who wanted to uh. Build the additional condominium next to a, his neighbor was. Not agreeable to that, so those two took a huge amount of our resources, and um. Two members, Dennis and Patrick Hagens did a bulk of the work, but very technical people. There's lots and lots of uh, minutes that had to be taken care of, so I spoke with the town manager about that. And putting that additional money into our budget for this coming year, in case somebody, in case we get more meetings like that. Could require transcription and so forth.
So you would hire somebody to to do the minutes rather than have a member? Is that what you're saying?
So, yeah, so Paul stopped in ahead of the holidays, we talked for, for a little bit on this, and uh. The, the idea being, if there's something that's coming on to the agenda that seems uh like it's not necessarily. Deals, but something that's gonna be, you know, contentious.
Yeah.
It's very, very important to have a very strong written record, and so we were talking about kind of the challenger minutes. And uh, I had said that I, my proposed budget that you see in a few weeks. Will include an increase in the proposed expense line, that's all about their, you know, what this board refers, what finance committee refers, and what town meeting goes. But my, my feeling was not for every meeting, but if there's a meeting where the chair has reason to think it's gonna be a elevated topic. It's very important to have a strong written record, and uh, if we have someone on staff, you know, with the time, the skills to do that, that would be one thing. But right now we don't, uh, so, you know, I think over the course of the year, uh, the, the cost that we were dealing with. When we were outsourcing minutes, I think it was two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars a meeting, uh, so over the course of the year, you know, if we added like twelve hundred dollars. That would be, I think, a conservative number that would cover four meetings, and I did, conservatively, yeah, and I did tell Paul when we spoke. If there's ever an issue like that, don't have the lack of budgeted funding be the issue, make me aware. Because if there's some meeting, and it's really important to have a good record, I, you know, first of all, you can do things with recordings and have audio recordings to support. Uh, but, you know, we can find the money, like, I'd much rather find the money and have a good record than find out after the fact. That something's very contentious.
Rather find thirty dollars than than have to pay a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar judgment.
Yeah, or, or just have, have the parties disagree on the basic facts, because there's not a clear record of exactly what was that. That's so, so I didn't want that lack of operating budget to stand in the way if there ever is a situation like that, so.
And Angus, in that situation, would you also, I think of you, since the second floor hearing on this.
Yeah.
Fully that, that we may, might make a, a best practice in a meeting like that to have the meeting recorded like you do this meeting.
Absolutely, yeah, 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 we, we, me and Jim and Max and Rebecca and others on staff as well. Are all able to set that up and facilitate, you know, get the equipment started and make sure that it's recorded, just like CPA does. They, they use the Zoom to record, even if they're not.
Right, exactly, the right, that's, that's.
Sorry, so, yeah, I mean, almost, would it make sense to do that in, in place of have a higher minute? You know, uh, contracting with a minute taker, because I know that's been a problem finding the resource. Trying, trying, the, you know, we don't, there's not a huge pool of people out there.
Right.
Dying to take minutes.
That's true, yeah, I think, I mean, I don't want to go too far with this, because it'll come up in the budget, and that's, that's, but, but I'll just say briefly, uh. I think there are definitely vendors who. I think there are definitely vendors who will do it. They couldn't keep up with the number of minutes this particular board needed. But for like a one-off, there's definitely vendors who will do it. Secondly, you know, if, and this is separately related to the budget, but if there's a proposal in the budget for, you know, a change in staffing structure, and we if we were to hire someone new as a support position, and it's right in there to do minutes, and we hired someone who's good at it or is trained on it, like our assistant time clerk does an excellent job, let the minister black of doing minutes. Partly because when that individual was hired, he knew coming in the job, that was a part of the job. So there was never like this resistance to doing minutes, like that's part of the job. Yeah. It's been a lot more difficult to get existing staff to embrace a new responsibility than it than it would be on hiring someone new to say, the ZBA may only meet, you know, one to four times a year, but when they do, it's your job to do minutes and hire somebody who's good at doing those minutes and recorded as well. So you're still, you know, so, yeah. I don't think outsourcing minutes is is necessarily a a long-term necessity. What is a necessity is getting minutes done well and getting them done timely.
Yeah, I had one question on here that the inspection administrator, that that's the person that does post your meetings and that kind of thing. Yeah, so I was wondering if that role eventually could could do the minutes.
Well, that's, yeah, I I think that would be a natural.
Yeah. Okay. So those two hearings on Maple Street that you mentioned, that's what you've done this past year, or did that go back longer than a year?
It's all of that. It's go back.
That's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The brewery was completely more my time. It was like, oh, maybe overlapping a bit with like twenty eighteen. And then the other one was more like a year and a half ago, and that was very contentious.
Yeah, that was right.
But it's a good, really good example.
Great example.
Things that can come up, and they will pop up. You won't know when they're coming until you arrive there. And it is a quasi-legal type of hearing.
Oh, it is. Absolutely, yeah.
So it it.
It's an appeals board.
Yeah, exactly.
So one other thing that this goes back a few years, but back in, actually with twenty twenty, Sam and I worked really closely with Paul and his committee to retool, completely retool the forty B application regulations. Because those had been approved, I think, maybe in the late nineties or early two thousands. And there's been a lot of changes. And so we have now very good forty B regulations. So we did that at that time, obviously, with the prospect of a filing. Filing never came through. But but that's that's an example of something that kind of came up and I think, you know, a lot of time was invested in that over the course of about ten weeks to get that done.
Chris, any questions? All right. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate you filling the questionnaire out and coming, joining us.
So I'm looking forward to my first opportunity to sit down in one of your meetings.
All right. What was the issue?
No. Oh, I thought you. Trying to do my job with this.
I'm saying before that, when I started the, when I first joined, it was like nineteen ninety-two, something like that. But I think I've been there since ninety-five. But back then, you know, well, that's too close to my property. And I said, well, I don't care. So, okay, that's it. All the meetings were like that, took five minutes. My philosophy was if no neighbor objected, it's okay. And that worked up and down the last few years because I've worked on it. Sometimes the law brings up the bad subject that I do. Playing for it. Do the CPA and you're on site and work the time out of the way.
I have no recognition.
Do all the rankings here?
A little bit, yeah.
Okay, anyway. I'm bringing up another member of the board who weren't there and they said, oh, no, no. It was quite the waste of town money.
All right.
If we might just want to quickly, you know, Patrick Higgins is is, you know, kind of a core member of the board. He he's he brings a tremendous amount of, you know, hats to the position and really goes through the applications. Oh, hey, Archie. In exquisite detail, so that's it's.
Yeah, he does a hard work and was terrible.
I just have a quick question. I was, I I wanted to come down earlier, but I was driving the con con crazy.
I'll say it can do that.
I'm sure the chair. I just wondered if you wouldn't have done, I, I didn't be on parts of the.
Yes.
The the, we did. The water project, okay. Yeah, the bids came in significantly under estimates, so we're working on the financing for that. Between what's going to be borrowed, what's going to come from ARPA and so forth. But, yeah, with the bid opening was was, what was it, right before Christmas? The the low bidder was like one point eight two. So that was pretty near.
There's like a million dollar present in front.
But but the full package posted to the website, the select board package, so you can see all the detail.
Oh, okay.
There's a fair amount in the packet on that subject.
Were you looking for information or did you have input?
No, no, I just wanted, I just wanted to see what happened.
Yeah.
Okay. Good news. Good, yeah.
Thanks. See you.
All right, the next item is, oh, update on the community preservation plan. So one thing that's required annually is to update the plan and then have a public hearing on it. So each of the members is going back to the respective boards, commissions and committees and getting their input on what they think are priorities for projects and what they would recommend. So, Nikki, that's what I am asking about you.
Yeah, go over that again.
Yeah.
So annually, CPC updates their plan, community preservation plan.
Okay.
And in that plan, they identify resources and needs in each of the subject areas. And so.
And subject areas meaning?
Community housing. Historical. And so rather than we just do it on our own, we're each asking our respective boards and commissions to get input on are there any projects you would like to see? What do you think our priority should be, that kind of thing?
So I did just out of curiosity for the members, this is up on the screen. This is the current one. This has been updated every year for for as long as the town has CPA. Can I call? Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, this is.
The the committee did completely retool it. It's a very different format. It's more to think than, but it's still a thirty-page document with a lot, a lot to it. But this has been updated every year.
So part of the requirement is an annual public hearing. So our thought, let's get our committee's input. We'll update this and then we'll have the public hearing on the draft document.
Okay.
We go up there, so.
And when is that public hearing?
It will be in February.
Okay, and so essentially you're asking for the liaisons to to reach out to the.
No.
No, okay.
Each CPC member is asking their respective boards and commissions. So I am asking you to ask the select board.
Okay, all right, okay, all right. Paul was with you. I didn't get either. I was going down the other path.
So, I mean, I guess this is kind of springing it on you, but are there any projects in the areas of community housing, open space recreation, or historical preservation that you think you should focus on?
Yeah.
Right?
Well, we talked earlier, the Mollin property.
Yeah.
Actually, we're putting affordable housing on there. See, that's that moving forward in the same logical fashion.
And so would you support an ask of the undesignated fund, the CPA fund for that versus the the ten percent community housing?
The proper way to do it is.
Well, you can ask for either from the targeted ten percent or from the two million dollar.
I would, I would, I would support that. I would, yeah. And in fact, there was an interesting article recently in the Globe about suggesting that the CPA need to be retooled or adjusted and that maybe twenty percent was more appropriate for.
Yes.
Because we have been telling, you know, we as a state have done such a poor job, actually, yeah, actually successfully promoted construction more affordable housing. Yeah, and I would, and I think it was very, you know, it was well thought, the article. Wasn't that complicated?
Again, not to, again, had a quick conversation in the executive session about the Mollin. And I was very surprised to find out that the MBTA Housing doesn't incorporate the affordable components significantly. So that's why, just so other people understand that, too. That's why the Mollin property has been discussed. It was previously had an RFP number years ago. Start with that and then find out where that went off the rails. Do we ever actually do one for the Craven property? Did it ever get to the RFP stage? Did it get candid, get voted down?
I think so.
So a couple other projects that, you know, we'll we'll get to under the review of proposed articles is the Summer Brook Trails. That's one that's going to probably be a CPA project. And then also feasibility study for citing a pickleball courts. So those would be in open space and recreation category.
Glad you brought the pickleball. So we talked about that before.
Yeah.
That's a.
Yeah, I've done quite a bit of research on that. I found at least six or seven other towns that have done a feasibility study and, you know, constructed courts. So I have, you know, numbers and everything. So I mean, my thought is that the select board should take the lead on that application because we're talking about town land, you know, rather than park and park commission.
I think it makes a lot cleaner too. More concise.
Anything in the historical preservation realm?
Of course. Different scanning organization. So.
Like archiving.
Yeah, for archiving records, especially in the not climate controlled placement area. Max and I, they're like.
Are you working with? Oh, you are.
Yeah. So are they likely to come forward, then propose in that, I wonder?
I'm not sure.
Yeah. Okay. So I don't know if that's trickle-down to.
All right.
The CPC.
All right, well, if you think of anything for next Thursday, let me know. Okay, we're in the action items. Number A, letter A. Little Street Bridge, offer request.
Okay, I put together a funding request, the for technical assistance to really remain focuses the one immediate interest is I need to, there's a certain paperwork that needs to be filed with each of the Mass Works office and the Mass D U T Small Bridge Grant Office in order to execute a grant contract. We've received the contract awards for a million dollars to five hundred thousand dollars expected. But some of the paperwork involved, especially on the Mass Works side, is pretty intense where you're needing to give a projected construction schedule with with detail as well as projected financial drawdown of when you'd be drawing, you know, from that. So that requires obviously certain knowledge of construction phasing or sequencing, I should say, and and cost drawdowns. So we did that back in two thousand nineteen when we applied for the Mass Works grant. But we, at this point, haven't had the project engineer under contract since July first because all the work they had done for us, B S D group, had been funded from the former Mass Works grant that expired at the end of June. So right now I don't have a budget line to draw from to secure engineering support. So I mentioned there were three main topics of support that the definitely running mine is getting these grant agreements, these grant award letters to convert those to actual contracts. The second area of support is on tracking the permit status and in the event that any permits are coming up for expiration, there's paperwork that needs to be filed with the appropriate agency to extend the permits. That's something that would be a tremendous help to have B S C under contract to do that. And third is, you know, this wouldn't come up until we actually have the project fully funded, but but there's at least one scenario where that could happen this fiscal year to secure full funding. The procurement process. Part of the prior contract with us was to prepare bid documents. We have all of that on file. But that was done last spring, and if we did secure full funding of the project, we would need to update the bid documents and put them back in there. So it would be very helpful to have the project engineer under contract for that. So I did go back and take a close look with the town accountant at the six hundred thousand dollars that was approved by town meeting in May of two thousand twenty-one. That was pretty clearly for construction. And so I did not feel comfortable seeking, you know, board authorization to expend any of that or cover any of that for soft costs. And I can't draw from the Mass Works grant, even though that grant does include eligible, an eligible portion for soft costs. I can't spend that till I have, it's chicken egg, I have a contract for that grant, so I can't expend funds. So that the Mass D U T grant is specifically a construction-only grant. So my request is for a twenty-five thousand dollar appropriation from ARPA. If the board approves that, my intent would be to sign a contract with B S C to get them under contract with the immediate goal of filing the paperwork we need to file with Mass Works by the end of the month to secure that grant. The Matthew T grant isn't on as hard of a timeline. And I did have a Zoom meeting with the grant administrators and actually I had a whole host of people at Mass dot to talk through the project in detail. They assured me that five hundred thousand dollar grant is our grant. They're not going to, you know, take that away. But they definitely, you know, have an interest, just like the Mass Works people do, with understanding what we could expect for drawdown of that. And obviously, we can't spend the dime of that until we have a construction contract. And we can't work a construction contract until we have all the funding. So, but I'm we can, you know, rest easy knowing that five hundred thousand dollar grant is there to stay. But the Mass Works grant, there was a deadline of of the end of the month to get the paperwork filed for them. So I'd like to get B S C engaged to help with that.
And so how long do you think this twenty-five thousand would 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 last or?
It's it's hard to say because as you see, it's structured on an as-needed, you know, hourly basis. This, I had invited a proposal from B S D back in July when their formal contract ended. They gave me one that's substantially identical to this right at the end of August. I didn't bring it forward at that time for a couple of reasons. I wasn't comfortable acting for use of a portion of the six hundred thousand. And there were so many, you know, moving parts. It it seems premature to be seeking money at that point. And and the the two grant applications hadn't been awarded yet. Now that the grants are awarded, I did, the one change they made from the version in late August was to add the final proposal point under one point zero, which is the the assisted town facility execution of the the two grants. I did, you know, have a remote meeting with Michael last week and I said, geez, I think it, you know, would be helpful if they would at least have some like activated not to exceed for each of the gold items. But there are still many variables. It's it's not you know, it's hard, it's hard to really do that. But I can tell you, you know, they've been transparent, they're billing. I think they've been, you know, fair, they've served us well, in my opinion. So, you know, I certainly don't have any concern about any kind of blank check to that they're only going to do what we ask them to do.
So I guess I'm curious on, you know, they have the two point O additional services. It's a time and materials project. Why wouldn't that just be part of the, I mean, is you know, is there a need to separate it out and saying this is not part of the contract? You know, is there a need to separate it out and saying this is not part of the contract? You know, un- unless it went over twenty five thousand.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we, uh.
Can, can you see any of those three bullets?
I think the first bullet really would be good to get under the scope.
So I'm gonna be in part of adding that. I mean, if they hit the twenty five thousand.
Yeah, there's no risk for that, yeah, yeah, I, I, I would be fully supportive of that. Great suggestion.
So, so that first bullet is really, uh. I mean, I mean, because we know, we know how long those permits are for.
Yeah.
We know the expiration date.
Yep.
So they're really timing. Determined, um. Uh, e- each one is, is, you know, dependent upon timing and maybe that's the reason why. They didn't include is because some of them. They just won't be relevant, whereas others might be depending upon how quickly the process.
It's not just the permits though, I mean, it's also the construction cost estimates.
Yeah, that would be nice to be able to, to have them do that within, you know, within the, uh, context of this agreement. Not out of a separate agreement, because we had made a manual adjustment just before Christmas adding, uh. You know, changing the contingency from ten percent to twenty five percent. Based on, uh, indirectly based on their advice, advice they give and then they work for, they work for it. You know, if, if we need to at some point have their very detailed construction estimate from May twenty twenty three updated. If I'd like to be able to have them do that under this agreement.
They simply didn't include, this is part of the agreement.
Right, yes, Wendy said, I think we'll move that up.
Right, which I'm guessing will then change their.
It shouldn't, I, I, I'm guessing they might suggest it would, but it shouldn't because it's all based on hours anyway, so.
We're right, but, uh. What I'm assuming is that the scope of services they proposed, they think it's realistic, can be achieved with twenty five thousand dollars budgeted. And, and they chose not to add the others because they thought that would push that to another, to another level. I, I don't have a problem doing it, I understand.
The scope is so general, those are, yeah, it's not like this will take ten hours, that will take forty hours, I mean, it's just a very kind of, like, as needed.
Yeah, yeah, part of my, you know, when I got the initial proposal back in, in the end of August. I, I thought twenty five, it was not exceeding twenty five thousand, I. I couldn't really justify, you know, that, I mean, without, you know, that's a lot of, even though, you know, they can't bill anything, I, you know, I'm still signing the invoice. Because it's not a, it's not a blank check, it just, it didn't seem like there was any meat there to justify that kind of number. And, uh, I think, uh, you know, now that we have a tangible thing we have to do, uh, for the Mass Works grant. It's still, that's not going to take more than a couple of hours at a time.
Kind of like having a retainer.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, somebody want to make a motion?
So, but just to be clear, it sounds like, uh, the idea would be to move that first bullet under two point O up to the scope of services. And that that motion would be based on that change.
Maybe we should take twenty five thousand dollars for our funds. While the town managed to engage in a contract with the B S G group for a sum of twenty five thousand dollars.
Further discussion.
Thank you very much.
I, I'll be review of draft delivery service policy. So what, my thought on this was that this is like what they have to do, you know, the instructions. I'm wondering if this language is appropriate for a policy. I mean, I'm, I'm assuming this information is available somewhere else, right? This is what you have to do if you apply for, or it's the only place it's gonna be.
So we can, we can do that, um, this is, I, I took this practice from previous policies as well that are in there. So there are policies that have kind of related.
Like instructions, okay.
Other towns policies, you know, this, oh, yeah. So that's, uh, there's only two or three of them, there's not many, it's not unprecedented, but we could have it just to.
Like refer to where.
Refer to where, so it's, it's up to you guys, that's, I only copy the.
So is this somewhere else, like, if somebody comes in for a license, you would have something we can to know about how to do it? Or we should thought you would refer to the personnel policy?
I, I refer to this, but if you wanted to be, this is, this is the procedure that we have and we can make the procedure publicly available online. And then we can just say, refer to procedure and make it that, the still that word policy is not personal.
Did I say personal?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Chris or Rick, do you have any thoughts on that?
Um, not on that, but a question, it's approval by the select board, but this is again, just check off the blanks if they hinge in the paperwork. Why do we even have to look at it? What's, what is the benefit of that?
All right, would you be just a final check on the box, that's all it would be, but if you don't, I mean, there.
Again, I think it takes time, we're not gonna get a whole lot of delivery permits out on us, so. But just, you know, conceptual wise, why would we even need to look at it? There's nothing we can do.
Um, because it's the town signing off on something and I don't, I didn't know if you want to in.
The town clerk to sign off on it, I guess is my question. It seemed like that, you're the one who gets the documents, you either have them or you don't, you could say yes or no, to bring it to us and say they got the documents, but already been done.
So is that a requirement for this? I mean, don't, aren't we responsible for licenses?
Uh, so the, the letter, if you recall, it, it's a letter from the town.
Yeah.
Um, so it would be just me saying this person has not the approval of what we, we have for our policy. Those are really all of this. I, I only included that because it's giving you the authority to sign off on something or not.
Yeah.
If you want to do me the favor to do that, then it could be there. So I, you know, I, I look at this as, uh, you know, a new service. That would be or will be available in town and. Having it referenced in a select board meeting to me is, makes sense because it makes it public somehow. Um, and it's almost like a term and or a license or. That's, that's kind of, that, that, that was my idea behind it, was to treat it similar to that. Uh, so if, if it ever eventually evolved into something else, then it would, it's natural that's our idea. Well, yeah, I, 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 yeah, I was, I was really addressing Chris's, you know, I think Chris, you were thinking that. Didn't need to, to be as, you know, didn't need to appear as, as an item at a select board meeting, but. I, I can say, well, actually maybe there's value in it, um, being, as long as it's not a time segment. You know, if it's, if it's a less than five minute item, then, you know, then at least it's, it's been announced publicly. That there's new, now a new service. That's available to people, you know, who, I assume would be available to people in town.
I know in other towns, um, Jim, does, does the select board?
No, it's, it's generally, it's kind of a function area.
Okay.
Because the, the next level, instead of doing something like this, would be providing delivery licenses and things like that and having a cab service.
Yeah.
And that would have to be approved by the board.
That'd be different for granting a license, it's just a letter, then the guy has to pass in a paperwork and he says, good.
Okay.
I don't have a strong feeling on it.
Yeah, I don't really have a strong feeling, I just, you know, I think it's kind of interesting if there is, if there is a new service available. But, um, it's good for people to know about, but maybe if. I mean, that's their job anyway to, uh, if they're trying to service this community, their job is.
So if we did not have it in the, uh, select board policies, then it would just be a procedure, town clerk procedure?
I, I would, I would like it to be somewhere, just so, i- if, if we wanted to just be a procedure, then. Have you guys perm this procedure, maybe it doesn't need to be a policy here.
Yeah, when the request first came in, you know, what, a month or so ago, and, and we'd never, to our knowledge, the town had never been asked for. To do anything like this, so we were cautious as to, you know, signing a letter on behalf of the town, you know. Uh, so that's why we had brought it to you last month to just let you know, and, and so, yeah, we thought a policy would be, would be good. It just gives us, you know, I mean, on, you know, for the present person who's asked, but I think one of the future, just gives us something to point to to say. This is what you have to follow, so just there, there wasn't anything, there isn't anything.
We could keep as a policy, I'm just offering a town clerk to sign it.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest, I think that's a good fix. So then all this detail possibly we need to be in here, but it just states that our policy is that the town clerk will review and. What are you thinking?
Yeah. Like, uh, like, one of my kids. Somebody had a remote service in town, did live on Crane Neck too, yeah, I think, yeah.
I'm not quite sure how that's on topic, Rick.
Well, well, it's, it's, well, it may external delivery service.
Okay. All right, so do we need to move on it then?
I, uh, no, I'm just, the reason why I ask is, I wonder how that, how it was dealt with it, or it wasn't, it just, uh, flew on a grid.
He lived here, it wasn't corporate, it went.
Oh, okay, all right.
So do you want to revise this, rewrite that first time, is that, is there a time issue for this particular person?
Yes.
Can we just make the motion and approve it with the change of having the top clerk to sign the treaty?
Well, if he's gonna rewrite it, I feel like we should see the actual policy before we approve it, but we could vote to approve this one or to. We could, we could vote that that is gonna be a weekend one, and then that would allow him to, to move forward and then we could do. So make your motion.
So make a motion that, uh, there will be a, um, not a policy, a, uh. A, a procedure performed by the town clerk and town clerk will, um, modify what was presented here as a policy. Uh, to represent that and, and I will not require the, uh, select board to sign the treaty.
It could be a policy, can't it?
Yeah, the policy will just refer to.
Okay.
The procedure and then. That's pretty much what you said.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Well, second, that's exactly.
Yeah, all right, all in favor, all right, Jim.
Jim's taking the minutes of what you said, so it'll turn out to be correct.
Good luck on that, huh?
Yeah.
All right, next item, F C's, uh, severe weather policy, this is just a housekeeping really to update them. Uh, the titles to reflect the current work chart. Uh, also just to add a reference to the schools, there's one thing that, you know, i- it's one of the. Least favorite part of my job, that whole snow closure, re-opening, early closing, you can't win.
Yeah.
Uh, although I will say, I think we got it right today, uh, but. Area clo- uh, school closures is a factor where we have employees with kids in the school, you know, and I hadn't thought of it, but it's, yeah, someone's. Got kids who normally go to school during the workday and all of a sudden, their kids are home and they might not learn that till. Five in the morning, you know, it's, 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 uh, so anyhow, I, it is something I take into account, so I wanted something in the. Language, because I do anyway, and so it's, it's a tendency really to kind of document the process we've always followed here.
So would you, I mean, I know our police chief is the E M A director, but would you, would that be an appropriate person to consult with?
I think that's kind of overkill because a snowstorm isn't an emergency necessarily, some of them are, but many of them aren't.
Okay.
Uh, it's, it's really more to like. Uh, I mean, it really has a lot to do with highway and in this, in this case of, uh, yesterday's storm. I knew from much, you know, late last night and really yesterday evening, that the roads would probably be fine by morning. The issue is more if his crew had to be focused on getting the building open by seven A M and the library open by nine. They have to divert a bunch of resources to do that, and so I, you know, asked him, you know, will Lee start to help? And he said, yeah, I'll help a lot, because then they can stay focused on the roads and, and have an extra couple of hours to get the buildings open. So it wasn't really a safety of roads issue, uh, as much as a, uh. As retaliation of restoring the issue.
All right, so it's good.
Yeah. Um, sure, I move, we accept the draft severe weather policy. Yeah, that's just the modified.
Next item is the Park and Rec Commission summer leadership staffing. Um, so you have Angus's memo here outlining his thoughts on it as well as the update. He and I both attended the Park and Rec Commission meeting. Last week when this was discussed, um, what his summary doesn't reflect is that both of the commission members that were able to vote. Both expressed their preference for a director and assistant director structure. Um, and said that this is the last year that we're gonna have co-directors, which is the same thing he said last year. Um, so I, I kind of raised those points after they had voted, um. I don't know, I, I feel like we just need to decide for them because they're having trouble sorting through the employees', um. Preferences and their third member who has a conflict is also making it difficult for them to make a decision. Uh, I did follow up with one of the commission members today and they said that they would prefer this left or take the decision. For them that they would be willing, there was a director and assistant director structure. So.
They said that in the meeting or is it that in separate comment, separate conversation?
That was a separate comment today, but, but both of them individually said that they preferred having a single director and explained the reason why. And they voted to not, so, um, I just think it makes a lot of sense, both from management with the town staff and interaction. You know, having one person to go to.
It always makes you have to have one.
Yeah, I, 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 we don't have any other department in town that has co-directors.
Because it would make things very messy, it doesn't work, I mean.
Yeah, and I just feel like, you know, our whole, uh, this whole wage and compensation study, we're trying to streamline things and get rid of the old, like, things used to be done. And, um, this is just inconsistent with.
But see, you've got two people who want to help run this program, they hung up on both being co-directors or do they?
Well, I don't know, but.
Do you lose one is my question, if you say.
Perhaps.
Well, you know, part of what kind of the background is there, but yeah, that was a precondition back in.
Previously, I didn't know, is now the new players, a new player.
Both of them were not co-directors last year, one was not, so in my mind, you know, we've kind of already leveled the. Situation again, but I don't know, it's possible that they would not do it, but I, I don't know that we should make decisions about what's best for the town based on.
Well, again, I think generally it's bad form to have two people at the same position, especially at the top of the leadership because of. Well, conflict, it just doesn't work well. If it caused the program to go away, I would say, well.
Well, both positions have to be posted and anyway, I mean, that's something that wasn't done in the past, but, um, it's required. Because they are, uh, school district employees, so this year the posted positions will be posted and Angus will interview. The, if there is a director, he will interview and shoot the director, um, assistant director or counselors that they will all be interviewed by the director. So, but they have co-directors, Angus would interview and hire both.
Uh, just got clarification, so it sounds like you're going in the direction of a director, an assistant director. Uh, you haven't talked specifically about the coverage of the six weeks of the program.
Yeah, I, I feel like that's something for the Park and Rec Commission to work out, so at issue is, I don't know if this was clear from the memo. Yeah, so the, the reason for the co-directors is one director covers three weeks of the program and the other. Yeah, so the, the reason for the co-directors is one director covers three weeks of the program and the other puts the other three, so they don't have to work the entire summer. Um, so.
But they still get compensated, uh, that didn't make sense.
No, so.
And again, that's why the context in the memo, because.
Yeah.
If, if, um, for the position we were in and and the feeling at the time that. Without the specific individuals, there wasn't gonna be a program. Things were agreed to that, that really were were kind of over a barrel, oh.
So do you feel like that's something that this board should weigh in on in terms of the staffing of the program? I mean, I feel like that's more.
Uh, well, it's, it's, you know, there's this language I stated in both memos about the Town Manager Act and the Board. Uh, you know, the town organization structure is subject to approval of the Board. It's what you make of it, uh, I, you know, uh, shoot. Showed total deference to the Board on salary and wages over the years.
Mm-hmm.
Board structure wasn't until the last couple of years that we had a real board chart, cause it took me a couple of years to figure it out. Uh, uh, but I think that, uh, you know, the general staffing structure in the Board should be comfortable with. Uh, I think right now the issue at the front of the Commission Thursday, these tonight is the leadership structure specifically. I even get into, you know, and and I think like how many counselors and how, who should be on staff, I, that's really should be a director decision.
Yeah.
Uh, but in terms of the leadership structure, whether, whether this board wants to weigh in on the idea of the. You know, if there were a single director, if that person necessarily needs to be on site all six weeks. Or if that person through subordinates, maybe not one, maybe two assistant directors, I, I don't know. Uh, there's gotta be a leadership person at every hour this program's running.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
Well, they should both be on staff at the time, they have one in three weeks, the other three weeks, that's like getting double compensated for last work. Yeah. With the movement that we. I phrase it properly, that we, uh, request the Park and Rec Department to establish the position of director and co-director.
Director and assistant.
Director and assistant director.
So is that the proper language, Angus, we're not requesting really, right?
No, no, it is related to approve, uh, a structure with a director and assistant.
Exactly what I said.
Okay, alright, that good, ready for the discussion?
And the, um. Compensation. Will.
That's a future item, cause that's gotta be approved just as.
Yes.
A.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I'm, I'm good then.
Okay, all in favor?
I, I, there, there was enough here, just we have more structure, and I didn't wanna also try to tackle the compensation structure.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, general discussion, known and potential for our articles.
We, uh, you know, I do a memo like this every, pretty much every cycle, just to kind of share what's on our radar. Not looking for any commitments on anything, but if, you know, if there's things to catch your attention, either saying. That's super high priority or why are we even talking about that, tonight would be a good, good time to get.
Are we thinking that we are gonna have a regional agreement amendment?
I doubt it, but I didn't wanna.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounded like my.
What kind of meeting schedule for January thirtieth?
Oh, you did, okay.
General, yeah.
Which, which will rebegin again.
Yeah, depends on the process, there's certain people wanna add new looks on everything. And it's gotta go to the state for review, so I don't see our dovetails.
I think if anything other than what we had laid out in that memo last January.
Right.
I don't see it going.
Right, and we shouldn't rush anything, it's not.
And I'm glad of that. It's on the emails, Angus.
Yes.
They said they're gonna be sending in documents with revisions, so.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, they're, yeah, so.
But I felt like since it's floating around, I should at least.
Yeah.
Be on a list.
Yeah.
That it will survive.
It doesn't sound like there's any chances.
I'm, I'm, uh, I, I'm a formalist.
As it relates to the water budget.
Mm-hmm.
If we could add the words revenue and expenses. We should be reviewing their revenue as well as their expenses. They're, they're different than the town, the town revenue will come from raising the amount that we need to. The water department should be like, you're being on, it should, it should be submitting all the, uh, expense budget, but we should submit revenue budget as well. That's been an issue over the past couple of years.
It has, it's, uh. It's definitely, I'm happy to talk with you about and like think through, cause I think it's a, it's an interesting idea you're raising. Uh.
They, they, they are standalone, including revenue, that's.
Correct, right.
And, and, and not doing revenue leaves you to not understand whether expenses are, are too much, too little, or whatever. So I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I think I, I think I hear what you're saying, it's, it's more just, uh, that's, that's, uh. You know, really so much based on their rate structure and what they raise through user fees, which is the Water Commission's authority. So I, I, you know, it's not town meetings authority to approve rates.
No, 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 it's not the rates, but you, 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 just as we, we review from them, their proposed expenses.
Yeah.
We should be reviewing from them their proposed.
I, I, I definitely agree in the budget process.
Yes, right, the front.
In terms of what gets to town meeting, I don't know about that.
I don't know.
But, but that's, yeah, that's great, I mean, I mean.
We can sort that out.
Yeah. No, I agree, the, the spirit of what you're saying makes total sense.
Yeah.
And I think if, if that had happened last spring, you know, last March, when I've written in details of the commission.
Right.
You gotta have, you know.
Yeah.
And, and they didn't do what I was pushing, and maybe it's because there weren't enough people. You know, aware of what was going on, but, but, and then they had to cut their budget by fifty grand in the fall. Because they hadn't set their rates properly.
Yeah, meaning their expenses were outstripping their revenues.
Yeah, which was the, the issue, yeah.
Any other things that, you know, you are aware of that should be on there, it's a pretty expensive list.
There's, um. Sort of a long shot possibility that. Um, that there might be a proposal for, um, solar. Installed up on DPW site. Um, and so. And there really isn't anything definitive to talk about there at all, you know, we're supposed to, we're. You know, the Energy and Stability Committee is expecting a proposal from, um. You know, from, from the vendor that we've talked about in, in the past, um, uh, collect. Um, you know, who works for or who is part of the, the power options, chosen vendor. So, you know, there, there's just a thick legislation that supports power options. So, I mean, it's, it's a. It's a long shot that we'll have something in time and then it will make sense, but I guess I'd like to keep the door open. Until we know that it doesn't make sense for this year.
Okay.
Um, and, and when we get to other topics, you know, when we get to the end, I'll have more to say about it, but it's not relevant to. Possible scenario.
Mm-hmm, so maybe submit a placeholder then, or are you gonna wait till?
Um, I think we'll wait.
Okay.
Um, and placeholder would be due by the twenty ninth.
Or the sixth, we'll, we'll get to that, yeah.
Okay.
Just curious, which articles, which have sunset dates?
Were, were we, were we citing them too firm or just a couple, uh, by half steps?
Uh, you know, I think when we, when we get to that list, we can, we can make that, we can all come to our conclusions, I think. Obviously, the Middle Street Bridge was.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's happens.
That's one of them, but there's actually a, a, like, you have access to server, right? Cause Jim's got a whole list of everything sunsetting in June thirty. And I did have access to that.
Rebecca has a list.
Okay.
When, when I, uh, when I was writing this memo, I found that list, cause we have it on a shared server. I didn't know which of those, some of these may be, what I, I just asked Rebecca a while back, just. Create a list of everything that's sunsetting in June.
Right.
Some of these may be done, so I don't, but, but there's a lot, I mean, a lot was that. I mean, at a glance, that's probably gonna be seventeen or eighteen.
Now, do you need a request from the person who did it originally to extend the sunset? I mean, some people would just walk away from the project and let.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I'll read them to you, and but again, just cause I'm saying this doesn't mean it needs to be extended. It just means it's sunsetting to act green treatments, uh, adult place study of lands. Um, which is the one, the western center one. Uh, the, the DPW workstation relocation, that's the whole thing of the, the, you know, uh. Woodworking and carpentry, getting it over the, across the street, that one I picked, we'll probably want a sun, I would want a sunset. Uh, dump shop at five fifty, uh, facilities improvements, that was more of like, I think that was the one that funded like this. And, you know, uh, uh, highway garage route. Uh, historic preservation restriction, I'm not sure what, I don't think there's anything in there, I think it's just a blank folder. So I, I, I don't know what else to break to. Uh. That might be two of them. Uh, matching funds for your communities, that was, that was done, that was street bridge. Eight school evaluation audit, that was done, eight school structural safety. Uh. Oh, that was the rentals, the, the non-lentals, the still, uh. Uh, repair, replace fencing at Pipe State, that worked, been done, restore field sticks at Pipe State, that's been abandoned. Uh, health communications improvement, that's a phone replacement, there's probably a good chance. We have a pre-bid work walkthrough with the respective vendors on Wednesday of this week, but even if we get a contract in place, that works probably. So I would, at a glance, there might be four or five.
Yeah.
Three or five that might need.
But to Chris's question, you, you would then go back probably to the person.
We talked to them, yeah, I don't think they need, you know, it, it's, I don't think we.
No.
Yeah, if, if I have no intended use of money, then yeah, we're not gonna extend it. Yeah, yeah, but if something's, uh, if there's, yeah, yeah.
I'm also making sure we're set timelines to.
That, that's my reaction, that's my reaction.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a handful, I mean, the, the main one was the bridge, it's been on my radar for a year or so. Like, we gotta not forget to extend how, uh, and then I, yeah, we put together a complete list, but I'll work with Jenny. What the balances are and then the, the articles sponsors for what work, what I think remains, some of those.
Yeah.
Will want to extend, and I think it's probably four or five.
Additionally, you do have two citizen divisions that I know of as of right now as well.
Two, what is the second one?
Uh, the second one was, um, David Seaton is the original one that he wanted to do last fall.
Fifteen year old voter.
Fifteen year old, ten year old participate in local election in town.
And you say two, but I know with the, no, and that's not filed, we know it's coming.
No, no, that's two.
Filed.
To, to do that.
That are on our radar, but not yet filed, yeah. One other thing that I, that occurred to me, that I don't know if the, the intent of this, the timing. But the, the idea of a potential, uh, Rox Village Bridge advanced warning was the. Was there an idea to try to get funding this cycle, cause if so.
Yeah, but I, you know, that's, actually, I've, I've reached out twice to, um, the company, it was Tepco, I think is the name of the company.
Yeah, the Georgia company.
I, yeah, so I, I reached out again today, cause I hadn't heard back and, and left a message, which was gonna be forwarded to. Uh, maybe I have to reach out by email, like, I sort of wanted to start and just have a conversation with somebody, but, um. But yeah, that, that's probably a good idea.
I'll put it on here, there's no, it isn't just really as a regular reminder, so.
Right, and, and certainly it's gonna be carried forward to the fall, depending on time.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the beauty of the fall, not everything can happen all at once.
Yeah.
Especially if they're not returning a fall.
Right, yeah, and I don't know how to read that, I mean, the other one was before the holidays, you know, and, um, uh.
Things don't happen before the holidays necessarily.
On the other hand, on the other hand, I'm kinda anxious to see stuff done because I don't wanna see that bridge get whacked again.
Well, the other, this is more inquiry from me. When, with, if, when year goes through, would there be appetite for school stabilization at least for three years prior that the. Funding full funded.
Yeah.
I'm talking, you were talking that.
I wonder.
We're gonna weigh in eventually.
When, when the, uh, school stabilization was set up, we'll look back at that, but.
We just.
I don't think it is specific for Penn Tucket, I think the same fund could be used. So it's really, I don't think, I don't think we're talking about creating a new account so much as it might affect. I mean, you might still choose to drop some down for Penn Tucket, but in the other hand.
It would be a bad idea to look at it, though.
Yeah, yeah, definitely ought to be looked at, you know.
This goes into that whole question of, you, you know, setting aside funds that are available right now in free cash. For certain defined expenditures that are gonna happen, you're lowering the tax rate two years out rather than right now. Uh, so it, it's a great question.
Yeah, and we're gonna find out.
Soon.
One way or another, I think, two weeks in a day.
So can you confirm that the same bunch of use for?
Yeah, 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 I think, I think, I know, uh. There's special purpose stabilization funds, like school stabilization funds that are statutorily authorized. And so I think when the town created that account, they voted, first people went through that statute to create the school stabilization fund. Obviously, it was commonly understood, everyone was intending to do that, the selector, Joe Anderson, were proposing it with Penn Tucket project in their mind.
Mm-hmm.
But the statute doesn't, I don't, I don't think you need a separate fund. Uh, but, but we'll look into.
It's like a capital, capital, uh, stabilization fund, that you don't have to know the specific piece of equipment.
Right.
Just draw out of the.
Correct, and it's limited for those, for those statutory purposes. One thing that's interesting that just came across the wire from the last Department of Revenue or, or Mass, I wish I got it. It was only Monday, MMA updates, just in the last week, uh. There was change to state legislation. That changed the quantum of vote for appropriations out of certain stabilization accounts. So I forwarded that to Jenny, we talked it over, neither of us have fully researched it. But I did talk with her about it last week and her, her initial take on it. This was changing legislation recent, that appropriations out of stabilization funds will remain two thirds. But appropriations out of special purpose stabilization funds actually changed to simple majority.
Really?
Yeah, back to something to that effect came through in the MMA, the periodic updates it sent us.
Uh.
But neither of us had had time to go look at the statute and see exactly what it says, or, but there's gonna be guidance from Department of Revenue. But so we just said, whatever we end up finding out about that, we need to obviously make sure, you know, everyone knows, the moderator knows, all of that.
Okay.
And if that is the case. You know, I would probably favor more special purpose stabilization, because it's a lower quantum of votes. So it's a little better to actually use the money for the purposes, that is why.
But it's also good for people to know the fun, where the fund resides, what purpose they're be put to, that's.
Right.
You know, the discussion.
Right.
A bunch of free cash, a bunch of stabilization, at least it's a known purpose, so it becomes a little clearer as how we're gonna use it.
Yeah, yeah, so that's where, Rob, I, I know you probably just got this packet a short time ago, but I did put that on there.
That's great.
The idea of creating a fund, not necessarily funding it at this time and do that at a future town meeting, just because of the math involved.
Sure.
Uh, cause I wouldn't wanna pull a whole bunch of money out of general stabilization without really thinking through, like.
You, you may wanna examine why it went in there first of all.
Exactly.
So if you got, like, if you got, if you got two million in there.
Yeah.
What did it go in there for?
Right.
And you wouldn't wanna suck out all of it, just presuming that.
That it all went into capital, right, right. I, I know, I can say for the last five years I've been here, everything put in there has been for capital, and I think that's it, but you're right.
And, and when you go back, the last, whatever his balance is, the latest votes are. It's, 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 it's last in, last out type of thing, it's like inventory, so, so if, if you add it up.
So if the last five years account for more than the current.
Then, then I would say that's it.
Well, and they do, I bet you they do.
That's the way I would handle it. Just a thing.
But I don't know that the net, yeah, we want to look at what's the net change, but yeah, yeah, so. I don't think it's like a huge project, but it's a big enough project that it's, if it. Since there's no time sensitivity, it will, it is time sensitive.
But again, perhaps from following it.
Yeah, maybe create it, put some token amount in there.
Right, or the first year, and then, and then resolve how much should follow.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I like that, that was good.
Okay, should we talk about meeting dates?
Yeah.
Rob, did you, do you have the pincon dates now? I mean, have we decided if we're gonna, um, joint meetings?
Oh, yeah, we're, I thought we resolved that our last meeting.
Well, it's not clearly which one, are you coming to any of ours, or are you expecting us to come to all of yours?
I was waiting for you to tell me how you wanted to go with that. We have, we have all the Wednesdays set up, if you want to do them all on Wednesdays. Then that'd be easiest way. Do them joint, but have them on the Wednesdays that we've set up.
Seven, the first, the first was February.
But I've got, I've got an agreement from everybody. As to certain dates, the first week in February, the first week in March, oh, because Dan can't be there.
Okay.
Other than that, we're locked in. We locked into specifically Wednesdays. You may want to consider just doing joints, but. On Wednesdays, I mean.
Well, it's just that we have other business on Mondays, so.
Right, exactly, but that business doesn't go away.
Right, if you come to our meeting.
Yeah.
You can do your business, which is mostly what we'd be doing jointly.
So tell me how you want to do it.
Well, I'll, I'll. Why don't I read out, out the six days that, so it's February, Thursday, February fifteenth. Wednesday, February twenty first. Wednesday, February twenty eighth. Wednesday, March thirteenth, twentieth and twenty seventh. Were the six dates within that time, thirteenth, twentieth and twenty seventh of March. So if we look at how those.
Two of those dates and put them on Monday, is that?
Sure.
Okay.
Just come to the date so I can go back to the group and make sure, I'm presuming that they're mostly going to be available. But.
Which days you guys can't make?
Um, yeah, I was going to say later, the, well, the twenty first and the twenty eighth, I will, I can zoom into, but I will. Not be local.
First, any?
That would be February.
Or the March.
Yeah, we'll do it, we can talk the June days.
Rick, on your dates, are you available the Monday of that week?
I, I, um, I mean.
Because that may be one of the Monday weeks, right, yeah. So we'll accommodate you.
Yeah, so the, um. Yeah, so the 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 one that's the twenty first, no, I'm not, um, available that Monday, and.
But we don't have a Monday meeting that week anyway.
Well, correct, yeah.
All right, what about the twenty sixth?
Yeah, the twenty sixth, um. Uh, I, no, I will be here for that one, I'm planning to be here, I'll actually be leaving on the twenty seventh.
Okay, so the twenty eighth, can you move that to the twenty sixth?
Yeah.
Another one, postpartum, I'm looking at the twenty fifth and the twenty seventh. If, I mean. Hopefully by your sixth meeting of the cycle, Rob, we're down to like.
Yeah.
Second comments and prospects, but you never know. Uh, if there's something to, like, having a last. Meeting of their cycle, I don't know, let's.
Again, if you're looking to move a couple, give me a couple.
Okay, how about the thirteenth?
Yeah, thirteen, two, the thirteenth to do it because the eleventh.
Yeah.
That way we can get the bulk of all the people at once.
So February twenty sixth, twenty eighth, and March thirteenth to eleven.
Yeah, that'd be great. All right, did you, you have other meetings in June?
Yeah, I can't get to June seventeenth, I'm unavailable from what you need to the nineteenth.
Okay.
So you can have a meeting without me if you want, probably eleven, is that it, David, again? Seventeenth of June. Gone.
You're gone eighth, you're gone.
Eighth through nineteenth.
Do you want to push that meeting to the twenty fourth, or?
You haven't done, I'll think about that.
Yeah. What do you think about that, I guess?
I think it's fine, I I think, you know, having. Three weeks between meetings from the third to the twenty fourth, you know, there's always a chance something comes up, and we gotta. Add a special meeting, but if we didn't, I can tell you on those, I mean, this only happened, I think, once I've been here. It's really nice having a week that's not either a meeting week or a meeting crap week, because we are able to get a lot of work done, a lot of work. So that would be pretty enticing, and and I wasn't. Thrilled with the seventeenth of June being the last meeting of the fiscal year, I I doubt that would work out anyway.
Okay.
Uh, so, but it's, just because sometimes there's fiscal year on things that are important.
Right, yeah, no, I can get it, okay, so.
Well, hopefully with the reappointments, you know, we can get, you know, we'll work with the schedule we got and those. But but, yeah, things always.
So.
So the seventeenth, the seventeenth.
Yeah, I I like that one.
Okay, and will we leave July one?
Chris, that was pretty fun, yeah, you're good.
Uh.
Maybe we could make it the second week in July, so.
There's a logic to this summer that I haven't looked at.
Okay.
Yeah, uh. And, uh, I know what we can go into cake, uh, let me check that, because we pre-booked that almost a year ahead. Yeah, the last summer, I know there was a certain schedule that just kind of made a lot of sense that covered the entire.
With vacations and.
Yeah, between holidays and 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 it got us kind of on a, on a. Uh, looks like item one cake card the week of the eighth, July. I'll be there from the sixth to the thirteenth, so I think I'll stick them with the first, and then at some point we'll bring forward a schedule for the summer to get us through Labor Day.
Okay. All right, that sounds good.
Great, thank you.
All right. Video info session. So. I feel like we need to refine the purpose of it, my thought was to just get input so that you know what citizens' questions are, I'm not. I'm a little uncomfortable with this being like, we're going to answer everybody's question, because I don't feel like I have answers. You know, what do I think we can have Chip to feel? Even questions. So I don't know what. Other people think about.
I'm not sure how the presentation goes, but we don't have.
It's not going to be a presentation either.
Well, we don't have the presentation, or we did, I'm not comfortable. He decided not to show, I wouldn't be comfortable doing it for them.
No, I I don't.
Because that reports like you're in favor, uh, where the argument is. So, so at this point. Does he understand that Chip will be here?
Chip will be, but I don't know that we can count on him to answer all of it. I mean, my thought was, this just give people a chance to, you know.
It could be a free for all, that's what you've got. By choice.
Yeah.
Did you guys get this on your map? Yeah, okay. Yeah, I haven't seen it. Yeah, I I think I got it, I got it on Saturday, which is interesting, I I expected it earlier, it didn't come until Saturday.
My hand on Thursday.
And and.
What is the thing you're referring?
And 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 furthermore, um, in the same, on the same day. Um, back to back, I got the the effort which. They all came together, they all, they all came together, so, yeah.
Yeah, we don't want it to be a free for all, but I I do think we need to give residents a chance to just voice their concerns, I, to me, I'm just listening, uh. You know, straightforward things we can answer, but I don't want to be in the position of defending the project necessarily.
Well, that's a question, are we allowed to express our opinion at that meeting, because yes, I'm not sitting here looking to defend the project, I want to explain. Why I think it's fiscally irresponsible, I mean. We need vote tech, I get that, but I don't think this project is the right one.
So what what is your vision of performance?
Well, I think. We know, being in this for at least two whole weeks, we've been aware of this, we've got a little more information. Most people, I mean, I'm out walking, and people pull me over, you go, tell me what's going on with.
Yeah, people don't know.
And the conversation, their heads almost explode when you get into the detail, but we had no idea, so, well. It's been out there for seven years, come on, um.
So, do you want to get a presentation?
I think we have to at least say. Whittier has given us a presentation, we invited the superintendent, she's chosen not to show, they've had. Allegedly a number of things she couldn't get. Our understanding is here's what the project is going to do, MSBA has agreed to give them so much money, there are eleven towns. No, I think we just run through the basics, and here's what it is, and then state. If we care, why I would not be opposed to this project, but then again, also say, what are the other opportunities too, you know? Whittier states that it's then becomes this other renovation project. Which I'm not sure is the next best alternate, so that's, you know. I would have a tough time not expressing my opinion on that.
So if we just had a couple sides that that have the facts, and then if we could have a side that says what our questions are, or what, you know, things that we don't feel like have been.
Well. There, and there are going to be people, and from looking at Facebook, which I know is a caustic place sometimes to get information from. Very much in favor of it. And are going to advocate very hard, so you, I can sit here and say, I don't think it's good because of this, and they're going to want, you know, it's going to be a back and forth, I expect, but it's got to be controlled.
Oh, absolutely.
Um, now, do we have access to Whittier's presentation when they sent the, so we could take the the basics lies out?
I, yeah, I don't know that I want to be in the position of presenting.
There's also, there's also a problem with that, because what what we were presented with was essentially a dog and pony show, and and the questions I ended up with. They didn't answer.
Right.
And so.
But the basic facts is what I'm saying, I don't want to show a picture of insulation followed by piping. I want to say, here's how much money they're looking for, here's what this day is giving you, and here's the general timeframe. Uh, here's how many students go there, here's the programs, people ought to know at least that as a baseline. No matter which side of issue you're on.
Right.
Right, basically the things that we have in the postcard.
Yeah, and then, then first of all, folks to know.
I mean, the money, the fact that it's based on the number of students in your district, not the number of students you send to the school, people still don't understand.
Well, I think we have to unwind it, actually, that's a good, maybe in my head, all the way back to nineteen sixty seven.
Yeah.
And that's where you start, there was a regional agreement, eleven communities joined. April.
It was, it was more, right, was there one or more?
Yeah, Boxer chose not to, that's.
Oh, at that time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, you know, Newbury Port and April each had two votes, every other town gets one. The members of the school committee are appointed by. The local school committees, you know, we don't appoint them, they're not voted in, this is how it happens. And then explain their budget goes, their school committee approves the budget, we are going to own a proportional share, as you said, of students in the community, not who go to Whittier. The operational budget is students. Uh, to go and the, the capital is going to be proportional to the number of kids in your town. So they will be disproportionate, and that Bernie Cullen fellow from Raleigh, I don't know if we can invite him, if that's appropriate or not, his graphics were very compelling. And factual. It shows that Whittier has sixty four, sixty eight percent of the enrollment, will pay forty percent of the cost. He shows the city's favorability ratings and things like that, that's helpful information. Um, I don't know if we want to. Bring him into the fold if he would, or using his documents.
I can reach out to him and see if, uh.
Yeah, it would be helpful.
Yeah.
It it would be helpful for people to understand that this isn't just us in our community that's reacting to this, you you know that.
Well, that's the. Slightly unfortunate, my perspective is that, I think, Angus or somebody stated, West New, we can actually accommodate the funding within our. Budget if we had to, all the other towns are in trouble, so. We could sit here and go, yeah, it's okay, but it's, it's just not the right. Thing, which is why I have a problem.
You say we can accommodate it.
Well, I don't know.
Currently, now. A million dollars a year for thirty years, the one.
It's actually thirty four years, I think they broke into, it seems.
But whatever, it it evolved into a million dollars a year for extended period of time. The one thing I didn't like about the postcard, I wish that on the postcard, we had, we had included the total. Not, which is principal and interest.
Well. At the meeting, and there was.
And we also had to be with a.
No, no, like, what I'm saying is, I I would like people to understand the full cost, I mean, I.
That's what I tend to do at the meeting, is I've got my presentation. You know, the number of students, the cost of the capital, the operating costs, and break it down from there.
Can you share that with me, and I'll put it into slides so that we can have somewhat of a presentation, and these are just the facts. What you just described to me, start with the agreement and all that, do you have that written down?
No, that was just.
Just off the top of your head, that wasn't there, so can you, can you summarize for me what you think the flow should be? No?
Well, I don't know, watch the video tomorrow.
We can, I will ask, because I I couldn't keep up with his, so I was thinking we just have Max watch the video.
Maybe I'll do, let me try.
Yeah, but but like Wendy just said. The slide should all be facts, they should not be in dispute.
Yeah.
Then what ends up happening is, this is the tricky part for me. So it's almost like a sophist's choice. Too bad choice, by purpose. Here's the one thing we've come up with, by the way, they could have come up with a number of different things, they could have, you know, but, and and, oh, by the way, you could say. No to this, this is what we're going to shove down your throat, so, so. People have on skin, if I was making a decision on this, it's. You know, going to be for some people. What happens if it's voted down? Come. That will be not in the slide, but that will be, I think. Out of this discussion, I I know that certain people, what they say is, just start the process over, you didn't come up with the right solution. But you know that there's an argument that that. May not.
Well, to that point, maybe the letter that we sent out that Wendy did, that explanation, that was in there, so maybe we use that as a basis.
Right, exactly.
I'll try and do an outline tomorrow.
That'd be great, and I I think, are you going to the H one? Um, Glentor, okay, so I think we can get some sense of that, yeah.
Yeah, didn't see your name in the paper. And by the way, to be, to be fair, I I'm going to the one tomorrow night, and you report which the mayor's putting on, and then Saturday morning, Whittier's doing an open house there, I'm going to go to that too, I might, you know. I know the general condition of the school, but, man, that's, we gotta go. I mean, it's not, probably going to change my perspective on anything, but.
Right. Uh, I was talking with with Christie before you came in, um. I I'm not comfortable presenting anything on West Newbury's behalf, it sounds like, um, Mayor, you're an email, they think the town has to respond to our. Citizens that are statehouse going to impact the town, that, that's how you feel about that.
This is his presentation.
I know, but it it sounds like he's planning on it, so I I don't have any intention of sitting up front or anything.
That's what I was going to say, to clarify, we didn't say, I didn't have a discussion about presenting anything, I just said, I'm not sitting up in an assigned seat, I'm gonna.
Yeah.
I'll be by the fire exit. Yeah, right, exactly, I'll be right by the door.
All right.
Um, so I I just have to say, I I I guess, um. I don't have nearly as clear a a feeling as it seems like many other people do. Um, and one of the things that troubles me about the the conversation. I mean, the 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 money is crazy. And that's, I can't dispute that, but one of the things that troubles me is that, um. Much of the discussion boils down to, um. People looking at it from how many students are there for my community, and and, you know, and what am I paying per student in my community? And and I stand back and I look at Whittier as a regional school. And we are a regional, a region, and we're providing a regional asset that we all benefit from if there is a trained. Um, workforce. Um, you know, I I look at one particular area, and, you know, be nothing surprised to anybody here, you know, that I'm focused on people who are going to deal with. Um, our future, future energy type, not solar, but but basically, the HVAC. But the HVC, um, remedial work and and replacement work. That's going to be necessary over the course of the next twenty to twenty five years, and I'd say with a very high degree of confidence that we have not nearly enough. Uh, capability, uh. Within, within this district, you know, within the regional school district, and within the region, the greater region. And, um, so, you know, there is one example where. We can't just say that, you know, we're educating this person here, and they're relevant to this community only. They're relevant to the entire district, and so. I'm just really troubled with that line of.
I'm just really troubled with that line of, of reasoning, I, I, I'm not saying that I don't. I'm not saying that I disagree, that the numbers are crazy. But I'm, I'm really troubled by that perspective.
I think that's an important thing to bring up, that it's not just.
Right.
The numbers.
But, but it is the numbers because of the magnitude of the project. The project, what it does, it displays how grotesquely overbuilt and overdesigned. This project is, and that's the only way you can do it. Because, you know, you could. I, I look at West Newbury's numbers, cuz that's who we represent, you could probably go three shit towns and break them down. And there would be, you know, variables, April would have. On the revenue, as I mentioned. You're looking between, I'll be very. Cautious, three to, three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars. Once you add in the capital and the operating expenses to educate a student. Over the next thirty years at Whittier, based on, obviously, mostly the capital expenditures. The operating cost of twenty thousand a year versus public schools, and these are about another sixteen thousand, right? So it's not the educational cost every year, it's the structure that they are building, and it's way overbuilt. And that's what is the disturbing component. It's, it's literally Pataki. A hundred and forty-eight million, this thing is three hundred million dollars more.
Yeah, every student in this district can go to that school, whereas every student in this district cannot go to Whittier.
Right, but they have some operational programs that require millions of dollars in equipment. Three hundred million dollar delta is staggering. And the cost engineer who was here, when he broke it down, he said, the basic building at Whittier is gonna be a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty million, something like that. So where is the other three hundred million? I mean, I know they're doing more fields, they have to be, and access road, the number is just so out of proportion to any sense of reality. And so to break it down by students. And cost per year per student is a very concrete way to display how off it is. Because like I said, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand is my number for our kids to go for four years. And as I said, UMass Lowell, we could send them there for four years for sixty-three thousand. They have infrastructure, we could send them to Wentworth and Lawson, which is a, a school for the trades, for a hundred and fifty thousand for four years. Those are colleges, this is a high school. That's how out of line with reality that this project is. I'm a gold tech person, that was my career, I was a cabinet maker. We, and, by the way, we didn't put out the cabinet makers. I hired a lot of people, it's a resource the district needs, I'm not saying anything negative about the education they give. It's the unrealistic expectation of this facility that they're looking to build.
So, yeah, Rick, you know, people will bring up stuff, I had a conversation last evening with someone, and, and the way people look at stuff. Can get you. Off on these tracks that really lead nowhere, I, I agree with you that it's not a headcount issue. West Newbury sends fewer students, but as Chris just said. Where are you being presented with the wrong facility? I mean, I would have a basic question of, uh, you know, what are we educating? What are the programs? Do we need really to have twelve hundred students over there? It, it could be that we shouldn't go back to a core. In, in the type of stuff that we can't, we've got, which is what the technical schools are supposed to be about. So, yeah, you, you know, people, in the discussion, you're gonna hear stuff that. This is what we're all concerned about, it's, it's gonna devolve as a conversation at a certain point. And you'll, you'll hear stuff that you can't buy, but to me, it's an issue of. They presented something that's way beyond the pale, and they need to start over again.
And it goes back to another core issue, which is the original agreement, which, if you read it, it's very disturbing. Because it's almost impossible to change, it's gotta be. Every town's gotta vote any change you need. And to have a funding component. That is disproportionate, it should be a two-step process on the funding, in my opinion. You know, the number of kids in each district town, and the number of kids who attend, that ought to be how this funding ought to be looked at. But you can never change this agreement, because every single town has to vote in favor of any change. Well, April's not going to vote in favor, cuz they have a very favorable agreement, I don't know who signed this in nineteen sixty-seven, but they weren't thinking very clearly though. And so to change that at this point is. I would say close to impossible, and what's even more disturbing is, I was considering. Making a motion at some point for West Newbury to exit the Whittier. Regional agreement, but that's also impossible, because it has to be accepted by every town there as well, so. Almost impossible to leave. It, it's, it's a very flawed document to start with. And that's.
If, if we were approached. And then someone said, we're gonna educate your kids for twenty thousand a year, but we're gonna need a four hundred and fifty thousand, uh, million dollar facility to do that. None of us would join that district. That's, that's the position we've been trying to. You know, it's, it's almost like. We have to have them rethink their approach to us.
Well.
Okay.
They clearly don't want to, but anyways.
All right, so if you work on your.
No vote.
I, I'm thinking maybe we might wanna have a format similar to town meeting, where give each person a minute or two minutes or whatever, if we start having people just.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah.
I think it's gotta be raised the hand, acknowledged, otherwise it's gonna be a.
Right.
I, I do think that it would be helpful to, um. Brainstorm the kinds of factual information that either you wanna make sure you have a chip in the test, or they're likely to be asked about, such as role, trend, or. Cost per student, or different things, because, um, you know, the, the postcard went out townwide. And so for some number of attendance. They may have never set foot at a town meeting, that may be their first introduction to us, that's the one.
So if you wanted water, that was the first.
Well, let me, let me just, just finish, that's a fair question. But, uh. I hate for someone to ask what to them might seem like a very basic question. For me, as their town manager and finance director, who's hemming and hawing, oh, and look like an idiot. When the reality is, I'm just focused on a million other things. And I have a million other things to do before next Tuesday, and I would like not to have to spend hours compiling information, but I'd rather do that. Than look like an idiot next Tuesday, because I don't happen to have the last ten-year enrollment trends at my fingers.
Yeah, I mean, one thought is that we could send out a, an email blast and ask the questions to the select board email, at least that way we have some.
That would be great, that would be great to have some prior notice of what's likely to be asked.
Wendy, wanna work on that with me tomorrow, Jim?
I think they're responsive, somebody, and there will be questions that we're gonna have, no. We just sit there and say, look. That's a question for Whittier, the superintendent has specifically chosen not to. She would've had the, well.
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
We have the rep here, Chip, but he's not, I don't suspect he has the answer to that, I don't wanna burden him with that either. So it's a fair question, we don't have an honest answer at this point, I don't wanna throw out a.
Yeah.
Which is one.
That's why we ran the discussion.
So one other question, Angus, um. Can we do a hybrid meeting if it's in the annex? Jean Lambert had asked about that.
Oh, I answered before it even occurred to me it was in the annex. Yeah.
We, we would set up the, I mean.
Yeah.
Vision for people at home.
Yeah.
Right, but also it's gonna, it's, we're gonna need to make sure that people speaking are coming to a line and.
That's actually a good idea, though, because that way they're not speaking out of turn, you're gonna be at the mic in order to speak.
I think we should run it just like town meeting.
Question for you as to, uh, whether you'll end up conveying what your thoughts are at the end. And related to that, whether you'll be wanting FinCon. To also comment, I've set it up so that we'll be there as a FinCon. Um, hopefully they'll be remote, cuz I, I promised people they would be remote, but, you know, I. What's the end result when people ask, are you gonna expect the FinCon to make a recommendation about this very large expenditure of money?
I mean, that seems fair, what do you think, Angus?
I, nothing prevents them from laying in, but I, I think to ask them to do that.
Yeah.
Eight days before, I think it's a little bit. I mean, that kinda not only puts you under the gun, it puts your committee under the gun, to where they're gonna, they might reasonably expect, well. Where's all the information, so they can make a.
Oh, yeah, that's the position we're gonna be in, exactly.
You know what's on my plate the next eight days. But, but the point is, when they ask for the information, who's gonna provide it?
Do you envision that FinCon members are gonna be asking for information?
I think we're gonna participate in the meeting in the same format that you are gonna participate in it. Um, I only ask because there are people who would expect. To have some idea of what the general. Well, specifically how the board, select board feels about it, how FinCon. But I agree with Angus, given the information that's presented, it, it reminds me of when Ross abstained. On, on a certain vote, he threw his hands up and said, this is just not enough information, I can't. And I, I really honestly think that, that this is all, all gonna become down to a personal. Uh, reaction, this is not a decision that is similar to anything else we've been presented with. So I would not want. The finance committee members to feel like on the spot with the lack of information that we would normally have. To offer an opinion, but I gotta tell you, there're gonna be people that are gonna be saying, so, what's, what's your decision, what's the FinCon's decision? It's, it's the thing.
Yeah. The select board is not gonna make a.
Good.
Position, I mean, that's not mine. You, you as a member of the select board can say whatever you want, but.
I think they'll give you just a little.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, so I, I, I'm agreeing, I've got it just right, because I've already been asked. You know, I've already been told that my obligation as, as, as the finance committee is to inform the public of, of. What our recommendation is.
Yeah, at town meeting, but this is not.
I know, well, yeah.
This is bigger than any vote at town meeting, money-wise.
I know, I know.
So, just while we were sitting here, I had asked Jim to see if he could find the building committee minutes, which is, within a matter of minutes, he, he could. And there's posted minutes, and, you know, I was listening here, and. Letter, page one fifty-eight, you know, thirty-six buildings, eight meetings. So that's thirty-six sets of meet, meeting minutes, I've never looked at them, you've never looked at them, none of us have ever looked at them. This is like the amount of information we don't know.
Yes.
That to actually like.
Make an informed decision?
In eight days for a townwide forum, that's, so I think managing expectation, you know, I think the way Chris framed it is exactly right, you know, this is something that. Whittier is proposing, they chose not to accept the invitation for the, you know, meeting on the sixteenth, but. I just, I don't want it to appear to people coming in that, that. You know, we've been sitting on our hands all these months, cuz the fact is, we've been running a town, which is a full-time plus job.
Right. I mean, I, I see the purpose of this is to just share basic facts, you know, about, like what you're talking about, and. I mean, we can point people to the Whittier website, um. You know, I, I don't think we can answer everybody's question.
No, that, that's for sure.
All right, the first, but imagine somebody says, well, how many programs do they have? We're gonna go, blah, 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 I mean, they could hit you with it.
Four.
What's this?
Why did you have that presentation?
How many kids in each of the programs, well, these are quite, I think we have to get the big picture, is, it's a staggering number, I mean.
Contrast what we've been shown. To the process we went through. On the regional pipe game. And the fact that we actually said no the first time around, because they really didn't have their act together, it wasn't a good plan, they finally came up with a good plan. Um, the superintendent's presentations towards far exceed what we know about the operation of Whittier. The, the freedom over there. It's cold shock.
Well, and, when we did Pataki, I was on the podium at the time, I said to the superintendent. We, we used to meet with the select board, I said, at that, can I let them know we're gonna be looking to go forward with a new project? And he was like a little shocked, he goes, yeah, so that was like six years in advance. And it wasn't a casual comment, it was like, get ready and plan your budgets based on this. And, and the whole thing, and they were shocked. And we said, it's coming, and every time we come back to the meeting, cuz the school committee used to come in once a year for the. Budget, we'd let them know that we're moving forward, and he's putting in the, uh, the SOI. We let them know when, what, you know, the whole thing. Um, it wasn't a, uh. Newsletter sent electronically, or we let you know, or anything like that, it was a pretty concerted effort. Over four or five years before we even got approved for funding. So. I don't know.
So in terms of setup for the room, um, I'm almost thinking that whoever is gonna moderate it. Every, like, we're not having the select board sitting behind, like, it's not like a town meeting, I mean, what do you think? I, I don't wanna give the appearance that this is, you know, a presentation, or this is our project, so, I mean.
You know, when you, when. The, the way the presentation.
It's not a presentation.
The way the.
It's not a presentation, it's a forum for us to listen.
Right, so, so, the, the way the presentation was made in the forum. When they, uh, were doing the, uh, MBTA thing.
Yeah.
Where the, as people spoke, they, they, they would, you know, uh, rise up, turn and face the audience, so. Maybe rather than you're up on the stage, you have one person as a moderator, everything goes with the moderator. Uh, select board, FinCon could be like front row, and as a person, Rick, you, Chris, a FinCon member. Also wishes to speak to something that's been raised, they would go through the moderator, other than that, the moderator is looking at the audience to see. Who, who has questions to, to help the flow of it, and, and someone should do a slide presentation, but, you know, maybe that would be, uh, Max. Sitting there or something like, you know, but, but no, the point being that, that the slide should be, you know, without, you know, someone with a, you know. Pointing out certain things, do a slideshow, and then, uh, have the moderator open up the discussion, something like that.
Okay, so, so there's this tremendous amount of stuff that has to be put together here, and.
What?
Well, slide present, I mean, I.
I'm gonna do that, Chris is gonna ready now.
They've already committed.
So, and, and I would be the moderator, I'm out with that, and this, Angus wants to do it, but, but I just wanted to. You guys can sit in the front row, but I think we should be held in the same two-minute or whatever limit, and not keep popping up and.
Yeah.
You know, making it seem like we are presenting this.
Yeah, I bet you have the answer to a question.
You know, um, the, the idea of, uh, having, um, somebody coming up and, and, you know, having to stand in line to speak. I think that's a good idea, and I think when people speak, they should be addressing the audience, they shouldn't be addressing the moderator. Because. Because you don't wanna be in that position. Well, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't wanna be, um, I think they should be addressing the audience.
Well, how about a moderator that is in front of those questions?
No.
No?
At first of all, I think Wendy would be excellent at it, and number one, I think, number two, you have to have. We call them meeting, where we have the forum, so to sit there and pass it up to somebody else is a chicken way out, and, and again, I do think. You're very good at those kind of things.
All right, I think we have.
Nobody will yell at you. And maybe then we bring in Chip. Having to stand up at the podium, that's the difference between having just a meeting versus a board, somebody has to stand up, they have to say their piece.
Yeah.
And it's.
You mean like, like, like.
Yeah, yeah.
They didn't have to identify themselves.
Yeah, yeah, cuz now it's not just. That starts happening. Yeah, we don't wanna, we don't wanna do a Georgetown.
All right, so is that something that, Jim, you can set up, or?
I'll work that out. Yeah, we'll work with Brian, we'll, we'll get a good setup, and we'll, we'll, uh. We'll, you know, if we have questions, we'll.
What's our capacity?
Uh, three hundred.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't think that many people are gonna come.
I don't think we're gonna see that many people, I think we're gonna still have this.
This will be recorded.
Yeah.
And it will be available for you.
Yep. It's very little interest.
Although, although it does take a few days.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's just a week before the election, but yeah, it'll be available. It'll, it'll be, we'll work with Adam, I mean, I can't speak for his, you know, it normally takes a couple of days, and, you know, for all I know, he's. I, anyhow, but presumably it will be.
Well, Tuesday, through Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
Do you know Adam's schedule next week?
No, no, no.
Cuz I know, so.
No, but what I'm saying is, because.
I don't know if he's going to New York City for a few days, like, I don't, he doesn't work for me, he's.
Well, that would be unfortunate if we couldn't get it out before the weekend.
Yes, it would, but.
Yeah, I'm.
I'm sure we can, but I can't.
About it at the cable advisory meeting.
Okay, okay.
I did tell him to have it the next day, but.
Another comment, I think the two minutes. for myself, possibly Rick, is gonna be, and for especially Chip, is gonna be problematic.
Well, you guys aren't presenting.
Well, Wendy just said, no.
We're not presenting.
It's our forum.
Yeah.
But I think we have significantly more information than the voters, so I think it's only reasonable to be able to interact or interject, I guess is a better word, a little more often. As with Chip, I wouldn't wanna say you got two minutes and I shut up and sit down.
No, I'm not, that's not what I'm saying, but you have to draw the line between educating people that are there and conveying your opinion. I mean.
Why don't you see what you come up with slides and stuff and, and maybe we've gone as far as we need to right now.
I, yeah.
I mean, I personally don't wanna get. I can imagine, I can envision getting up and giving you two minutes, and then somebody says something later on.
Yeah, that you might react.
Oh, no.
So, no. We stated it, I'm just saying, same with Chip.
God, you're so liberal.
You have to be with this crowd.
You have a two-minute presentation, you sit there.
To be like the Academy Awards, I'm gonna keep going.
You're gonna have a police officer there, clearly.
Right, all right. I, we're so prepared for this, I, it's gonna be great.
I don't like a deadline.
All right.
And I don't worry about that so much as what else it will crowd out in the next eight days.
Well, again, you know, I don't expect you to invest a lot of time.
I will, just because there are certain basic information that people who have never run a town before would say, how could that person not know that?
Right, right.
Well, when I send out my outline.
I just, I don't, you know, it's.
No, you're, you're, you're right.
I'll do a basic outline, and I'll send it to you too. So that he can just send you egregious points.
No, you know. Angus, it's a giant thing in the ass for all of us.
So Chris, can you copy the outline? Worth it. I agree, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, that, absolutely, yeah, good one.
All right.
That's what Angus, so make the outline, send it to you so that we don't engage in conversation.
Yeah, you can even, yeah, no, I think that's, that's better. Yeah, copy Jim and then we'll, we'll prompt the moderator, yeah.
Okay, IMH correspondence notice from Mass DPU. So is this something the Energy Sustainability Committee will be taking up? This just came out.
No. I don't think so. I don't think it's.
I understand it.
I, I don't think there's anything we can do or have anything to do, you know, I mean, it's basically looking at, at, uh, the impact of uh, cost of energy on, on people. It doesn't.
So we have any comments or anything? That's what they're looking for.
Yeah.
I'm hoping Elisa will give us some guidance as to whether we should comment, you know, as she has.
Yeah, 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 so I, I. Um, yeah, I, I, I don't know, um.
Says for a little bit.
Yeah, exactly. It doesn't say a whole lot. And, you know, apparently, uh, there are, I'm, I'm guessing that, um, there is a uh, significant group of people who are freaked out by the, by the escalating cost of energy and, and, um, unfortunately, uh, you know, I don't.
Well, we, we comment on how long it takes to get approval to move to the program.
Are you talking about aggregation? I mean, that's, that, that, but that's not, that's a different issue.
Yeah.
And, and that, by the way, it looks like there is an ice jam break and things are gonna get better. It looks like that's quite possibly the case. But this doesn't address municipal aggregation.
This is a very detailed comment.
To address energy affordability.
So this, this has nothing to do with aggregation?
So are you meeting in the next month?
Uh, it says nothing. We, we're meeting in three or four weeks. We just met last week, but, but, but I, we don't, I, I don't think we have anything to offer on this. I mean, I, I read this and I say, still don't know what to tell you. The cost of energy. The, 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 the cost of energy, well, it says.
All right, I'm just hesitant to send this out, asking for people's comments if we can't provide context. And if you're saying this is not anything on, on your radar, then I'm not sure.
It's, yes, it's not, um.
All right.
I, you know, I, I, I don't know how to respond to this. I don't have a magic bullet of any kind. I don't have a suggestion of how you would.
I wrote, what does it mean on it? I had no idea.
You know, um, you know, the cost of energy is going up, um, and that's for a host of factors. Um, you know, basically, we've been living in a dream world for the last two hundred years. You know, and, you know, we've, we've been using energy in a sustainable, I don't wanna get off on a rant here, you know.
All right, all right.
But, um, you know, now, the, 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 ends are coming home for roost.
Right. Future agenda items.
Angus, what's going on with the boys tonight? They're all going moony on me.
All right, I do have a future agenda item. Um, I've been approached by people that are interested in a right-to-farm bylaw for the town, which would also include an agricultural commission. So my advice to them was to assemble a steering committee, um, you know, and then we could discuss this with them. Basically, it's forming an agricultural commission. It's just people that will support farming. Um, a lot of times the bylaw will say that you can't, you know, uh.
Can't have a pay grade.
Yeah, the bylaw will allow you to.
You can farm anywhere in town.
Yeah, that's a right.
Yeah, we are, we are.
But it's not just the bylaw part of it, it's also supporting people that are, you know, wanna engage in farming and. I mean, this has been brought up to me a couple of times by different people, so, uh.
I'd be curious, I mean, a hundred percent favor.
Yeah, I did a little bit of research on it. I don't know a lot about it, but there's a, there's a whole procedure if you wanna establish an agricultural commission in the town and study this.
There's a, uh, model right to farm.
Right, right. So I would envision having this steering committee or the group of people that are interested in doing the work to develop the bylaw and, you know, present it to us and see if we want to happen in the future town.
Yeah, I, 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 yeah, I, I have no objection to it, just I'm not quite sure where, you know, because you can, by right, you know, perform agricultural, um, stuff in town, with the exception of having a pay grade. Um, you can do that in West Newbury as it is.
Right, so I guess this isn't about making sure that people are aware when they buy a house next to the field on the road that, you know.
There might, there might be vendors right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah.
It's more of a, it's a.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, I need to do something.
Okay.
But the people coming forward are aware of what already existed.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Any other, um, future?
Yeah, I, I, um, I have a couple of things, um.
Please note it's nine forty-three.
Okay, all right.
Well, so I'll try to go fast.
All right, um, uh, there is a, um, uh, a pilot decarbonization, uh, planning program uh, offered by Mass DUC. And Mass DUC is Mass, uh, Clean Energy, uh, oh, it's called, I should run out, see, what is it, C C N, I'm drawing a blank right now, but in any event, it's basically Mass Clean Energy Commission. Um, and, and, um, uh, they're gonna accept fifteen different projects, or they're looking for about fifteen different projects throughout the state. Um, they're oriented towards, um, commercial buildings or multifamily housing. We don't have multifamily housing. This, this building, the senior housing and the annex would, um, uh, would meet the requirements for a, uh, you know, for a community service um, type structure that, that would be considered. Um, and, um, you need, the structure needs to be at least twenty thousand square feet, which the combined structures would meet that requirement. Um, so I'm interested, or the Energy Sustainability Committee is interested in exploring, um, and possibly applying for, um, this, uh, this, um, pilot. It's kind of a long shot, but the effort involved looks to be, at least from what I've seen so far, looks to be relatively low. You know, we'd have to come up with energy bills and stuff like that, but it's all, um, readily available information. Um, and, um, um, I'm wondering what, what, so, so this fits into the context where, you know, I've talked about the town ultimately needing to completely decarbonize. I mean, that's what's, we've all heard that said about the world. Um, and it's gonna happen structure by structure and, um, uh, you know, the sooner that we get involved, the better. Uh, this is an opportunity to come up with a plan, um, potentially, if, if we were accepted for, uh, one building on site. And, and, um, uh.
So would you be bringing up a proposal to the board to?
Um, or? Well, the ultimate, the result of it would be there, there are, there's a, a, a group of, uh, consultants who are retained by Mass DUC. Um, and they will be, we're, we're developing the decarbonization plan. So essentially, you apply for the, for the pilot. If you were accepted, you know, if your building is accepted, then you have to assemble, um, energy-related, energy usage-related info for the building. Um, I haven't gone through the entire application because to start that, you have to, you can't just jump from page to page. You have to complete a page before you can look at the next page. So I, I gave up after one page. Um, but, um, uh, there probably are pieces of information specific to the building, you know, to the envelope of the building that you would have to also supply, but it should be readily available information. Um, and, um, if you're accepted, then this consulting team comes in, looks at your building, evaluates it, um, and develops a plan, you know, based on the envelope, um, the existing energy usage, the, the site conditions. Um, you know, for instance, in, you know, location like this, they might propose, um, ground source heat pump as the long-term solution. And, and the plan, and so they will present a plan, the plan, or they will develop a plan and present it to you. The plan can be adopted um, near term or long term. Um, that, you know, that's part of the, part of the expectation here is that some facilities will be ready to make, um, fairly rapid changes and others will do it over a number of years. Um, and, and, um, uh, one of the ideas behind it is to try to, i- if you develop a plan for a building, and that's why this is just a pilot, because they, they need to figure out how this is all gonna work, but, uh, if you develop a plan for a building and you have certain, um, certain components, like the air conditioners on the roof of this building, one of which is, um, based on feedback Brian Richard is getting from a vendor who's doing the service on it is probably nearing end of life. Um, you, you can address those before the problem's critical. Um, and, and, um, uh, you know, and move to your, to a more appropriate future state instead of all of a sudden being confronted with an emergency situation where you have to come up with money and fund and, and, you know, replacing that you really don't have. So.
So if, if this time, if we're just identifying future agenda items, I mean, is this something you wanna have on a, like, will there be more information?
Yeah, yeah, let's see, yeah, so. I guess, yeah, the, the problem is more information would mean going through the application process. I, I forwarded Angus, um, not in time to be on this agenda, last Thursday or Friday, forwarded Angus some info on it, and maybe the way to start this is to include that info on our next agenda and then, and then talk about it a little bit.
Okay, that sounds good. So that would be a general discussion item?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and did you have something else?
Yeah, uh, the other one, uh, again, we're talking about, uh, potential solar article.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I don't really know, you can't get any proposal yet from Select. Um, and furthermore, uh, you know, there's discussion of where there's, in talking with Angus, you know, there's been some conversation about what do we do about the DPW site long-term? You know, are there changes in the configuration out there? Are there, are the facilities right-sized? Are there, or do we need additional storage space? What, you know, what is needed? So, um, and Angus, you might be able to state this more clearly than me in terms of the conversation you had with, with Butch and/or.
Yeah.
Or, or with, with, with anyone else, but, but in, in general, that's something that, um, you know, perhaps the select board wants to look at at some point. You know, we don't want it to do a solar installation up there. We'll then compromise the use of the site for something else at a later date. And, and in fact, if there is something else gonna be done at a later date, it would make sense for solar to be integrated into it as part of the design as opposed to coming in, in later.
Okay.
So, um, Angus, you mentioned the possibility of, of, of a meeting where the board was up, so all you can take.
Yeah, so it's really, I don't have any more to say other than what I presented a couple of meetings ago. You know, I had an onsite meeting with, with Butch and Brian and, uh, Kayden Parker. A lot of really interesting ideas came up, you know, and you, I, you know, kind of, uh, and, and Mark, Marlo hadn't even been part of it, but part of what we covered was the water side, so I had suggested, you know, to the board back in, I think, November, that at some point we, we pick a date.
Okay.
Right, so I asked Rebecca to reach out to you, because Rick had called me this morning and, and, um, you know, so I think it would be helpful to have people on site. I don't know exactly what we'll talk about. It's more just to share ideas.
Mm-hmm.
But, but, yeah, I mean, I think Rick gave a good analogy. There's, you know, when you look long-term at that site, there's questions about space utilization, sufficiency of storage, you know, how the operations work right now between the, the northeast and side of the road and, uh, whether we wanna go forward with the incremental improvements, which are what are funded to move the, basically the woodworking station across the road, or whether before we do that, we wanna at least have a conversation about the bigger picture. I think a bigger picture conversation makes a ton of sense and so I, after talking to Rick, I, I asked Rebecca, because I figured your schedule's the most difficult.
Mm-hmm.
So if we can figure out the time that works for you, I think Chris and Rick, you know, Rebecca would then pull them, pull Butch, Brian and Mark, and, and ideally we could meet out there for an hour and kind of do a combination of brainstorming and just giving the board a clearer sense of some of the decisions that might lie ahead.
Okay, all right, that's good. Uh-huh.
Um, yeah.
Okay. Right, Chris, anything on that?
I have fourteen items.
Okay, all right. What should we do here?
Sorry.
On favor?
All right.
Thank you very much.
I almost had to get out my gavel.